Thanks. And now we have a conference with labor negotiators in closed session with the city-designated representative, city manager, and his designees pursuant to the merit system rules and regulations. I need a motion to go into closed session. All in favor?
Oh, done.
Done. That passes unanimously.
This is a partner presentation by the East Palo Alto Sanitation District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll ask Phil Bobel, our Assistant Director of Public Works, to introduce our guests and speaker.
Phil Bobel, Public Works. Thank you, Ed. From time to time, we want to recognize and thank the partners to our sewage treatment plant, five of them in addition to Palo Alto. Tonight, we have with us Dennis Scherzer, who is a board member of the East Palo Alto Sanitary District. We're thrilled to have him, and he'll be up in just a second. Just by way of background, I'd say that why it's timely to recognize and thank East Palo Alto Sanitary District for their engagement and help in moving forward is because we're about to give you, council, the next major project, the construction contract approval for our next major project, a $20 million sludge dewatering building that'll allow us to phase out our sludge incinerators in about two years. That's important because they use a lot of energy and produce a lot of greenhouse gases. So it's an extremely important project for us, but it's only the first step because it just gets the sludge, takes it to the next step of being dewatered, and it allows us to truck it to another facility, probably another sewage treatment plant, for a period of time until we can really get the next technology in place. And that's what the East Palo Alto Sanitary District Board, and Dennis in particular, would like to talk to you about tonight, is what should that next technology be that the sewage treatment plant embraces? And Dennis has some thoughts on that, and we thought, again, it's nothing you need to approve. We've not made a decision on that next major piece of technology, so it's good to have him give you his thoughts now, well in advance of a decision you'd be making. The construction decision you're making in a number of weeks is only that first step and not the second step that Dennis is going to be addressing. So let me introduce you and thank him for years of involvement with the plant, Dennis Scherzer.
Welcome, Mr. Scherzer.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp, members of council, and on behalf of the East Palo Alto Sanitary District, we especially want to thank you for graciously allowing us to share with you findings that we've made. When we were first aware of the process and the proposal of treatment plant upgrade, okay, that's a little better, back in 2014, when the biosolids facility plan came out, that's when we first started to see what was planned for the future. And laid out in that plan, I'm sure you're familiar with all these pointers, about 10 of them, these were the things that you said should be accomplished by the new facility. Among them, minimizing greenhouse gas emissions, I want to make that clear, and producing renewable energy. Those were two key points that we saw in our process of looking at this. Now, biosolids facility plan, what it recommended is what you see in bold there, and that's exactly, you know, what it said. So one of the things that I saw as a person who designs reports and information is that how could anyone other than someone who's quite familiar with the technology and the industry know what this says? It took me several hours of research to figure this out. So that was one of our concerns in that the way the information was being presented to decision-makers wasn't clear. And we wanted to be able to share this, decision-maker, decision-maker, as well. Now, I'm always, this is one of my things, I always point out Mr. Imhoff, because we're going to talk about anaerobic digesters, and this is the godfather of our industry. I've been involved with it about 35 years, and he wrote that book, The Handbook of Urban Drainage, in 1906, and it's still the bible of what we do. It's still viable. And he also patented a device called the Imhoff Tank in 1907. That was kind of a glorified septic tank. And when you look at the history of anaerobic digesters, first thing I could find was 1859 at a leper colony in Bombay. How about that? And a couple of things in England, then we see Imhoff in 1907, and in the 1930s, it picked up because they started capturing the gas, the methane, and using that. The city of LA installed a fairly large facility in the 30s just for that purpose. This is the basic anaerobic digester. It's kind of a facetious thing, but it's very, very true, because the same natural processes that go on inside the cow, the same kind of bacteria are what make the anaerobic digester work. The idea of the anaerobic digester is the bacteria react with the biosolids, and they reduce the mass. When they do that, they're breaking apart molecules and giving off gases. This is a little bit of humor. This was the cow-to-car program, as they called it, trying to create a direct link between the cow's methane and use in a vehicle. Cows produce about 250 liters of methane each a day. Now, in the anaerobic digester, there's four stages that happen. The first one, hydrolysis, is just stuff gets wet. It's like soaking the dishes, it makes stuff soft, and that's the idea. That creates more surface area for the bacteria to work on. Then fermentation, fermentation, making alcohol, that's the next stage. Then alcohol, I call it vinegarization, that's a word I made up, but if you leave the fermented stuff, it turns to vinegar. That's acetic acid. Acetic acid is something that is made of both CO2 and methane, and the methanogenic bacteria break that apart and make the methane, and that's what is desired to do. That's what in that alternative 2C is, to try and set up the anaerobic digester so they make as much methane as possible in as short a time as possible, then use that methane in an engine, turn a wheel, turbine, make electricity. They start with thermal hydrolysis. Again, a little bit of humor here, but this is not as facetious as it may seem. Using the water and heat and some pressure, you get that material to break down, just like in the crock pot, if you leave the carrots and potatoes and the meat in there long enough, it'll all turn to mush. When that happens, that's not a liquid, that's a bunch of particles suspended in a liquid, and it's a great amount of surface area for the bacteria to access. And this is four stages, this is a little chart I made up, if you'd like to look at the chemistry and see that. The only thing I'd like you to remember from this is every time one of those stages happens, CO2 is released, because in order to break down the molecules, they have to break them apart, and that gas is what's given off. The basic anaerobic digester looks like this. There's a propeller at the bottom, it stirs the liquid, the bacteria interact with it, the gases float to the top, it's captured and drawn off for some type of use. Now, coming from the digester, that gas is, in the industry, is referred to as recoverable or recovered natural gas, in deference to natural gas which comes out of a gas well somewhere. And the alternative 2C recommends separating the methane and using it in an engine. Now, in order to use it in an engine, you have to process that methane to take out water vapor and the stuff called siloxanes, which is a silicon dioxide that's floating around in the water vapor, and this is one of the most amazing things I discovered, it comes from the bacteria. They actually have a skeleton, a tiny little speck of silicon dioxide, but if you allow it to accumulate when the water condenses, it'll crust up engines, pipes, anything. This is what the acetic acid molecule looks like, and it's carbon dioxide and methane. And the methanogenic bacteria, where the rubber meets the road, they break this molecule. And that's how methane's produced naturally. In the digester, methane and carbon dioxide are often about 50/50. If you are talented and work well, you can get up to that 75% stage, but that requires a lot of tending that may be impractical at a treatment plant such as ours. Now, one of the things I discovered was that there's a popular terminology called biomethane, and it's used by people in a way to try and suggest that biomethane, methane coming from an anaerobic digester, has less of an environmental impact than mineral methane, something coming out of, say, a gas well in Texas. The thing is, when you compare the two molecules, they're identical. Methane is methane, once it's been produced, and can have no, you know, there's no different effect. What's biomethane, that terminology's been used a little too much to sell equipment related to gathering the methane and using it from anaerobic digestors. But in order for the biomethane to be somehow greener or more environmentally friendly than methane, that's the process of producing it. The carbon footprint is what's at matter. And since all the naturally occurring methane on the planet is a result of bacteria breaking apart that acetic acid molecule, it's all biomethane. This comes from the biosolids facility plan, and it was developed by the engineers to try and calculate how much methane would be generated if you land-filled the biosolids. And once they're in an anaerobic environment with the oxygen cut off, those bacteria will start making methane. And by the time they're through feeding on it, roughly 39% of the mass gets converted to methane. There's a practice of land application where it's put in with a composting operation and mixed with other soils. That, the aerobic environment reduces, greatly reduces the methane production. However, the CO2 will still continue to be generated, and both are greenhouse gases. Industrial agriculture, the biosolids and the food waste are all industrial waste from industrial agriculture. So when you look at the carbon footprint of the source of this material, this feedstock material, it's from industrial agriculture, and that's a fossil fuel-intensive activity. Food is a fossil fuel. Let me give you an example. When you look at what's on the label of this can, Chef Boyardee, there's good stuff inside. See, it says right there, no preservatives, but you've got ravioli in a tomato sauce with all these different vegetables, there's meat that came from a cow that had to be raised and processed and ground up and cooked, there's a biscuit of some kind, all these things coming from all these different places, and they all showed up at that factory, it was all cooked up and then put in metal cans with paper labels on them. A lot of fossil fuel went into that. Now, a little exercise here to show how inadvertently we create a carbon footprint. I'll talk about fluid milk consumption, nothing to do from the cow to the glass of what those people are drinking, but this calculation for Palo Alto. So 250 liters of methane per cow, and that comes about 130 and 1/2 pounds of methane per year per cow. Two gallons of milk per day, that's 17.2 pounds of milk a day, according to USDA, the average person consumes 195 pounds of fluid milk a year. So that's about 24 gallons, 12 cow days, or 4.275 pounds of methane per capita is generated by people drinking milk. So for Palo Alto, the population, according to Wikipedia, is 64,400. I rounded it down to 64,000, figuring there are at least 403 people who are lactose intolerant in the town, and that comes of just a little, almost 137 tons a year of methane, times 22 to give it the carbon dioxide equivalent, you get about 3,000 tons, just by the innocent activity of drinking the milk. So the carbon footprint of biosolids is greater than what's being shown. Now, and that the bacteria are always at work, and as long as those biosolids are in existence, they're going to be generating greenhouse gases. In the anaerobic digester, that's the point, that's what they want them to do, that's what that technology does. In most anaerobic digestors being operated for municipal systems, for every 100 tons of sludge in, about 95 tons of sludge comes out, and has to be shipped off-site somewhere for land application. That's a nice way of saying they're dumping it on the ground somewhere. An example would be Orange County Sanitary. They produce 750 tons of sludge every day, and 41% of that is trucked to Arizona where it's directly applied to agricultural land, not composted. And in California, places where you can dispose of sludge from your anaerobic digestors, and thinking now, we have a 30-year lifetime of this project, they're disappearing. There's a very good possibility that within 10 or 12 years, there will be no place to send the sludge. There's no guarantee, that's not firm. And if there were ever any lawsuits, like San Francisco suffered with the flame retardant and the tomatoes and that kind of stuff, they're going to sue everybody, includes you, us, anybody that had any kind of sludge out at the place where there was a problem. So that's, the sludge liability needs to be avoided, and we do that right now, because some 50 years ago, smart people here in Palo Alto decided they didn't want to be involved with that. They'd rather incinerate the biosolids, the sludge, and for every 100 tons in, they ship nine tons of ash away. And what never gets showed up and calculated by destroying those biosolids, we also destroy the potential for producing about 5,500 tons of greenhouse gases a year. But the incinerators are going to go. This is my little idea that, you know, people say, they always say, in the last 35 years I've been in this business, all the time, looking, here's a new thing we can do with sludge, a new use for sludge, use for sludge, this is my best idea, because after 35 years, nothing's happening. So we could bag it up, put a picture of a reggae singer on it, and sell it to the marijuana growers in Northern California for 50 bucks a bag. Now, this is an all-too-familiar site, and to most people, this is tragic and filthy, but to me, this is great, because what I see there is a tremendous amount of energy. When we, we want to create renewable electrical energy from this project, that's one of stated goals. So we look how it's generated. Thermal's the most common, creating heat. Hydroelectric, geothermal, thermal, and wind, those four all require that you turn a wheel, spin, make a generator go. Solar is different. The thing on the bottom, that's an acronym I made up, that stands for the thing out in the desert with mirrors all around it, and which somehow focuses sunlight on some type of a thermal fluid, and convectionist thermal fluid makes that work, and that's all I know about that. Now, pyrolysis-based system. Pyrolysis is two words, pyro, fire, and lysis, change of shape, and it uses high heat, but in an oxygen-free environment. Rather than burning it in a furnace, you're baking it in a box. And the gases are driven off, and it's a synthetic mixture, it's called syn gas, and all the gases get burnt, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, it all gets burnt, and the gases are highly controlled. Oxygen added to make them combust. Also, everything else that's nasty in there, a molecule subjected to 1,200 degrees or more, the molecules break apart, hazardous materials are destroyed, and there's practically no emissions from this type of system. The system we're talking about is, in the modern sense, is referred to as thermal anaerobic gasification. Anaerobic digestors are gasifiers. They turn biosolids into biogas. They are biological gasifiers. The anaerobic digester is actually the chemical reaction vessel in that. In a thermal gasifier, it uses heat to create the gases, and it can gasify any carbonaceous material in its reactive chamber called a retort. And things that are available in a municipal solid waste stream that could never be used to create energy in an anaerobic digester can be used in the thermal gasifier. And these things are not big necessarily, especially in the terms of how much material they process in a day. And they heat themselves, operate that with additional heat, going again to make steam or burn the gas in an engine to make electricity. Now, making that syn gas, you have all these different products, if you're interested in industrial chemistry at all, you sort of get a feel for all the things you can do, which includes making hydrogen for fuel cells. It's using gases and combining them, controlling them, recondensing them to make liquid chemicals. That's what this thermal gasifier is excellent for. Now, the energy, this is one of those things that you can't ignore if you're going to generate electricity, because you're going to be doing it thermally, and you've got to at least expend 3,400 some BTUs to get a kilowatt hour. And it's going to be more than that, because you're not going to be able to capture all the heat. This is the, from the EPA, the stuff on the left, 83% of municipal solid waste, including about 1/3 of it, are the products that you're concerned about, the food waste, and you've got yard waste and trimmings that are being exported, I guess, to a site in Gilroy. All those things on the left can be processed through a thermal gasifier. The ones on the right, they won't gasify. If they get through there, they won't ruin the thing, they just won't generate any electricity. And you see, per pound, the sewage sludge is on the low end. That's why you haven't seen power plants run by sewage sludge, other than the fact that it's nasty, there's not much energy in it. They're better off using coal at 10,000 BTUs per pound. But as you see, the plastics have the latent energy value of gasoline, and if you're going to make electricity, you've got all this plastic's laying around, carpet, nylon, all this stuff. This is what, it gets shredded up to put through the machine. This is from a vendor's advertisement. I guarantee you, it won't look that clean. And you see that in waste-to-energy technologies, you see that using pyrolysis fills all of those requirements. Gasification itself, some of the gasification uses oxygen, and it'll make slag and ash, and that's not the most preferred one. But you see, all these different things are possible. When you go to the more or less organic ones, you can make heat and run an engine, or heat a boiler and make electricity. They're limited in what you can do with them. And the throughput, that's what's left over after you process it. You see, the anaerobic digester, 95 tons per 100 tons, 95%, the current incinerators, 9%, and depending on how hot you run it, the tag unit, 5% to 10%. And this is what a basic tag unit looks like, a six-foot-tall man sitting on there. That unit can process between 100 and 200 tons of municipal solid waste a day, and produces carbon and heat. Now, this is the pyrolysis-based treatment system that's at the next regional water quality plant up the road in Redwood City, where their biosolids are dried and then put in the pyrolizer to be turned from biosolids to biochar. So here's what we said, technical viability and reliability, pyrolysis-based technology has been used industrially for 200 years or more. And the potential impacts and benefit, especially on municipal solid waste stream, dealing with that effectively, capital operations and maintenance costs, there are fewer processes and smaller equipment, so it's, that becomes easier. Minimizing greenhouse gas emissions, a tag unit offers the best technology available for that. Buying a beneficial use for the biosolids generated, well, we've been destroying them for the last 50 years, so if we just destroy them and get some energy out of them, that will do. Producing renewable energy, we have so many things available to do that with. Manage the organics, all that can be converted to carbon or char. Meet current and future regulations, tag systems have already been demonstrated under Air Quality California AQMD. And minimizing odors and other environmental impacts, if you control the gas, you will control those. So our conclusive findings are just what I've said. The tag units work best, anaerobic digestors, nothing wrong with them, but they present challenges with dealing with that sludge, and there's a limited future for that. And also, if you have a tag system, you can use other municipal solid waste to generate electricity. So I want to thank you and all the other partners, and especially Mr. Bobel, our uncle Phil. I know we're responsible for way too much of his gray hair, but, you know, we've got to give him his proper acknowledgement for really staying in there with us and working with us and coming to a good conclusion. So thank you all.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And now we have a member of the public, Herb Bark, would like to speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor Sharp, and I appreciate the presentation about pyrolysis. When Phil Bobel was at, I guess it was the Utilities Advisory Commission, at one point, pyrolysis was listed as an alternative. However, when staff reports came to the council most recently, I didn't see it there anymore. And I would encourage pyrolysis being presented to you as an alternative, because I agree it's the best alternative. The facility in Redwood City is a pilot project, and it was originally set up to process only half of the wastewater because it was a pilot facility and to see how it operated. It's true that municipal solid waste would be another feedstock, but the environmental effects are different. Waste water comes in underground pipes to the facility. It doesn't come, you know, arrive at the facility in trucks constantly during the day, whereas garbage, municipal solid waste, would have to be arriving that way. But it does require an economy of scale to have a lot of that. So you'd need a big plant someplace where the traffic problems would not be the way they would be in our facility. The second part of the problem is that over time, we have segmented municipal solid waste through recycling and separating or composting, so that we would have to look at things differently, which is combining it all again and having enough of an input to make pyrolysis justified for municipal solid waste. And as we're heading towards this 2021 deadline, and not just for us, but for other cities, I think it would be a good idea for staff to consider, you know, working with other cities to have such a facility. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now to our next item, we have Rob DeGosse to introduce it. Oh, I didn't see any lights on, sorry. Before we go, Rob, there's a question from Adrian.
Yes, thank you.
So, Councilmember Holman, that's fine, you go ahead, but I was a little confused. I didn't see your light, but Adrian's light's on, it's a little weird.
I just thought you would ask for questions, so I hadn't put my light on yet.
You didn't push the light on.
You didn't err in overlooking it, I just thought you would call for questions.
No worries. So Councilmember Holman, you don't want to go, right? All right.
Okay. So, yeah, just a couple of things. One is if staff or, where'd he go?
Officer.
Already leaving, so.
Phil, Phil Bobel is still here.
Confirm what, yes, Phil. If you could, please, what kind of economy of scale could we expect it to get out of the current identified site, and is it going to have to be a larger physical site than we had earlier anticipated? And what kind of noise does the pyro, I've forgotten what it was, pyro, pyrolysis process generate?
Well, the Redwood City pilot that was Dennis referred to is going to give us a lot of information that we don't now have. It's the very first, actually, in the It's the very first, actually, in the country, happens to be right next door to us, which is great. We're going to try some of our sludge on it. Whether we could squeeze it into our current site is exactly what they're doing in Redwood City is a little questionable. So that's one area that we're going to have to look at. Could we fit that in? The pyrolysis unit itself, as Dennis said, is quite small and we could definitely fit that in. The problem is you have to dry it before you put it in there. And the dryers at Redwood City are large. So we'll have to see if we can fit it in or not.
And noise factor?
That shouldn't be a big problem. The noise from the fans of our current incinerator are probably greater because they're older technology. So I think that the noise of either anaerobic digestion or pyrolysis, the noise would be smaller than our current incinerator noise.
Thank you, and thank you for your perseverance on this. You've been at this for several years now, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, seeing no other questions, Rob, Director DeGosse.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and councilmembers. Rob DeGosse, Director of Community Services. You may have noticed we've had a number of proclamations coming before council this month. By way of background, at the January 16th, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. event that we held at the Mitchell Park Community Center, we had Mayor Scharf speak at the event. And we also had East Palo Alto Mayor Larry Moody speak at the event. And thank you for doing that. And it's been a great collaboration with Youth Community Services for the last six or seven years, I think. But at that event, Mayor Moody and Mayor Scharf also spoke, not only about the remarkable impact Dr. King has had on our society, but also about the importance of February being Black History Month. And they talked about what we might do in February. And from that conversation, city staff and our committed partner, Youth Community Services, Leif Erikson, the executive directors in the audience, worked to prepare a number of proclamations to recognize several individuals, really local heroes, that have made a significant contribution to build and strengthen community, who continue to advocate for social equity and justice. Individuals that are compassionate leaders and make a positive difference locally, regionally, and nationally. And there are a number of them here in Palo Alto. It's quite remarkable. So in addition to the proclamations that are coming before council, a couple have already come and a few more will still come. The City of Palo Alto and YCS hosted a reception last week, February 23rd, in the chambers to honor the individuals receiving proclamations. And the individuals are Pastor Paul Baines and Clarence Jones, who've already come before the council, Ken and Karitha Coleman, Roy Clay, and Loretta Green. I want to thank the council members that were able to attend the event and Vice Mayor Nisk and Councilmember Holman for presenting gifts from the city and YCS at that event. And in City Hall lobby, you may notice that we have several displays up. And on the digital display, you can see and read about the remarkable accomplishments of the honorees. So this evening, we had planned two more proclamations. Unfortunately, Roy Clay is unable to be here this evening. So we've decided to reschedule the reading and approval of his proclamation to a time in the near future that he can attend and his family can attend. But we do have one other proclamation. That's for Ken and Karitha Coleman. And to receive that proclamation, we have Ken Coleman's niece, Lynette Jones, here to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. And we have Vice Mayor Nisk reading that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. And it was a pleasure to stand in for you last week. And Karen, thank you for helping with the duties when I had to leave. I appreciated that. So this is a proclamation honoring Karitha and Ken Coleman, whereas the City of Palo Alto is proud to honor Karitha and Ken Coleman, who have made tremendous contributions to the community with the goal of making the world a better place, helping others to succeed while advocating for social justice, equity, and progress. And whereas they were nominated for the 2016 Visionary of the Year Award and are advocates for creating opportunities for people of color, women in business, and they provide education on biases in hiring practices and have both contributed countless hours as mentors across the county to young black business professionals. And whereas Karitha Coleman was the second black female to work as an executive in the technology industry in the early 80s. She has served as Chair of the Board at Dignity Health, Board Member of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, also sitting on various nonprofit boards, including Board Chair of the East Palo Alto YWCA, MidPen YWCA, Center for Relationship Abuse Awareness, and Advisory Board for Facing History and Ourselves. She mentors young professionals and entrepreneurs across the country and has worked 14 years at her own consulting firm. And whereas Karitha was named as Outstanding Board Director by the Silicon Valley Business Journal in 2015 and one of the Bay Area's Most Influential Women by the San Francisco Business Times in 2015 and 2016. She is a recipient of the YWCA's Red Triangle Award YMCA's and received the Black Enterprise Trailblazer Award and was named a visionary leader by the San Francisco Chronicle. And whereas Ken Coleman, who served as an Air Force officer, went on to hold many important roles, such as management positions at Hewlett Packard, Vice President for Product Development at Activision, 14 years at Silicon Graphics, and top executive management positions, Founder and CEO of ITM Software, Chairman at Axilis, and was a Special Government Advisor for International Trade Policies. And whereas Ken has received numerous honors, including being named as one of the Top 10 Most Influential African Americans in the San Francisco Bay Area, a Top 25 Black Executive in Technology, the Ohio State University Distinguished Service Award, the National Alliance of Black School Educators Living Legend Award, the American Leadership Forum of Silicon Valley Exemplary Leader Award, and the 100 Black Men of Silicon Valley as well, a Lifetime Achievement Award, and was inducted into the Silicon Valley Junior Achievement Business Hall of Fame. Whereas, one of Karitha and Ken Coleman's most significant accomplishments is leading a capital fundraising campaign to raise $15 million in order to build a YMCA in East Palo Alto. At the end, it says, therefore, Greg Scharf was the mayor of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim Karitha and Coleman as community heroes and extends appreciation for their years of significant contributions, service, and leadership. That's an astonishing number of accomplishments.
Thank you. If you want to come up to the podium. You won't be wanting to. So she left. All right, now we're moving on to. No, it's a proclamation. Now we move on to our study session. We have an update on Stanford University's General Use Permit GUP application to Santa Clara County.
Great, great.
Yes, somebody missing something. Tom?
Yeah, because I have Stanford as a source of income, I'm going to recuse myself in this item. And I'll be here. Call me back.
Ready to go? All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Actually, Hillary's handed to me the opportunity to introduce our guests here. While the discussion, specific topic we have before you this evening relates to the Notice of Preparation on the General Use Permit, our ongoing partnership with Stanford is obviously a very important one for the city. So it's my pleasure on behalf of the city manager to introduce this topic. We have with us this evening Jean McGowan, Assistant Vice President, Director of Community Relations, as well as Catherine Palter, Associate Vice President for Land Use and Environmental Planning. I'd like to also acknowledge that Kirk Gerard, the County Planning Director, is also here with us this evening. Is he here? Well, I'm sure we'll see Mr. Gerard shortly. The county, as you know, is responsible for the environmental process and ultimate approval on the general use permit. So we invited Jean and Catherine to provide an overview of Stanford's application under the General Use Permit, or GUP, as you'll hear it referred to many times this evening, as well as respond to the council's questions. Santa Clara County is preparing an environmental impact report regarding the GUP and has requested comments on the scope of the EIR by issuing this Notice of Preparation. City has had an opportunity to provide written comments by the close of business next week, March 10th. And we thank the county for allowing us this additional time in order to allow the scheduling of tonight's study session. So with that, staff will prepare a comment letter based upon tonight's discussion and we'll bring that back to you next week for council approval. With that, let me hand it off to Jean or to Catherine? Catherine.
Thanks, Ed. There we go. Okay. Thank you. Stanford's application is for its lands in unincorporated Santa Clara County, which is shown in green on this slide. Palo Alto is our closest neighbor and we're very interested to know about your thoughts and concerns about the application we submitted in November. So thank you very much for this opportunity to come and talk to you tonight. I wanted to spend a couple of minutes going over the current regulatory framework that we have in the county because the 2018 General Use Permit application is really modeled after the success of the 2000 General Use Permit. The first document in our regulatory framework is the Stanford Community Plan, which is the part of the Santa Clara County General Plan that provides high-level policy direction for Stanford's lands. It was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2000 and it was meant to be an overarching policy document for more than just one general use permit. It includes policy direction such as compact urban development on the core campus, which allows conservation of natural resources in the foothills. This is encouraged by the placement of an academic growth boundary, essentially along Hiniparara Boulevard, which is very similar to Palo Alto's urban growth boundary. There's also policy direction to reduce, address impacts, such as a goal of no net new commute trips and building housing on pace with academic development. Probably one of the most important policy directions is that of flexibility with accountability. This is really providing direction for Stanford to have flexibility with regard to the type and location of its academic and housing facilities while being held accountable to address the impacts that might come from that development. The planning policies for the Stanford land share very similar values to those in Palo Alto's draft comprehensive plan, particularly Palo Alto's principles of promoting infill development within an urban growth boundary, creating a sustainable transportation program to reduce greenhouse gases and single occupancy vehicles, protecting the foothills and special status species, reducing contributions to climate change, and engaging in regional transportation planning. The second document in the regulatory framework is the General Use Permit. A General Use Permit authorizes a specified amount of development and provides conditions of approval. And both the authorized development and the conditions of approval need to be consistent with the high-level policy direction in the community plan. Stanford is currently operating under a General Use Permit that was received in 2000. That permit authorized about 2 million square feet of academic and academic support facilities and about three-quarters of that has already been constructed. It also originally authorized about 3,000 housing units. Last spring, Stanford requested to build another 1,450 housing units to support the Escondido Village Graduate Student Residences Project. And that project actually received unanimous support from the council before it was approved by the Santa Clara County. And once that project is constructed, almost all of the housing authorization under this permit will be exhausted. The permit also included about 40,000 square feet earmarked for childcare facilities. And then it also included about more than 100 conditions of approval. So Stanford can build its housing and academic facilities as long as it complies with all the conditions of approval. For example, not increasing any of the peak runoff to the creeks and not increasing the commute trips to campus. So as we were approaching the end of these authorizations, it was time for Stanford to think about what we might need in the future.
So before Catherine shares with you the facts and figures about what is proposed in the current application, I'd like to talk to you about why Stanford believes it will need facilities and responsible long-term stewardship of its lands to support its mission of teaching, state-of-the-art research, and interdisciplinary collaboration that is the key to addressing the most challenging global issues we face. Academic facilities do need to keep up with new fields to attract outstanding faculty and students and to allow for sustained leadership across the many challenges and issues we face. Knowledge is continually and rapidly expanding. Examples of new fields of research include stem cell research, neurosciences, material science, cyber technology, and artificial intelligence. As these and other academic fields change and expand, new facilities will be needed. And those often include specialized and larger spaces for experimental work and research instruments. Some of our existing academic programs are housed in aging buildings. For instance, key facilities for the School of Earth, Energy, and Environmental Sciences, the Graduate School of Education, and the School of Medicine are many decades old and need to be upgraded or replaced. And finally, opportunities will develop over the course of the proposed 2018 General Use Permit that we cannot predict today. The flexibility, which Catherine referenced, to accommodate unexpected emerging opportunities has allowed the university to produce some of its most exciting recent innovations, including the Stanford Energy System Innovations Facility, which has completely changed the way campus heating and cooling is done. And nor did Stanford foresee the acquisition of the Anderson Collection, which brought thousands of major 20th century works of art to campus. So what are we thinking through in addressing what should be in the 2018 General Use Permit? Well, first and of great importance, as Catherine mentioned, is the application proposes no changes to the governing principles of the community plan. And consistent with the community plan, the use permit application proposes new academic and support space, more housing, housing to be provided on pace as academic space is added, funding for affordable housing in surrounding communities, the continuation of the goal of achieving no new net commute trips to campus, and the continuation of the principle of compact infill development in the core campus and the continuation of the academic growth boundary. But Catherine will go through some of the more specific details of what the application includes.
So specifically, this application includes a development request of 2.275 million square feet of academic and academic support uses, 3,150 housing units or student beds, again, 40,000 square feet for childcare facilities or for facilities that support transportation demand management programs, like a transit hub. As before, we identified where we think this development might occur through the use of development districts. And you can see on the chart that most of the development is in the central campus. There is no development. There is no development proposed for the foothills district beyond the academic growth boundary or in the San Juan District, which is the faculty-staff subdivision. There, as with the existing use permit, there is no expiration date, but it's anticipated that this development would be completed by the year 2035. Just thinking about the development request for a moment, it's very similar to the amount that was originally authorized in the 2000 general use permit, and it equates to an average annual increase of about 1.2%. It's also consistent with the historic growth rate that has occurred on campus for the last five decades, with the exception of the Escondido Village Project, which was a very unique, large project. It's also consistent with the moderate growth scenario in the 2009 Sustainable Development Study. The Sustainable Development Study was a condition of approval of the 2000 general use permit, and it was required by the county because the placement of the academic growth boundary was a new concept, and the county wanted to make sure that Stanford could develop in a very compact way and stay within the academic growth boundary. So Stanford was authorized 2 million square feet, but the condition said, "By the time you've finished your first million, we want you to prepare a study that shows how you develop the first million and then how you anticipate developing the second million square feet of academic development," and an entire new general use permit beyond that. And since Stanford didn't know what that general use permit would look like, it was anticipated at the time to be between 2018 and 2025. Stanford created three different scenarios for analysis, and the moderate growth scenario reflected the historic growth rate, and it was bracketed by an aggressive growth scenario, which had a lot more development, and a minimal growth scenario. And the study showed that all three of those scenarios were able to fit within the academic growth boundary because Stanford was developing in a compact way. So after a number of public hearings, it was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 2009, and so the application that we submitted in November is consistent with both the timing and the amount of development in that moderate growth scenario. Once again, the application includes something similar as in the 2000 general use permit and known as a housing linkage, and this is what ensures that the housing is built on pace with the academic development. So for every 500,000 square feet of academic facilities, Stanford needs to build 605 housing units or student beds, and it goes up in a stairway fashion. So at the end of the day, when Stanford's finished all of its academic square feet, Stanford must have developed 2,753 housing units or student beds. Some of the housing that Stanford builds qualifies as rena housing. The undergraduate units are group quarters, and so they're therefore not considered under -- housing units under the state's definition, but the graduate student apartments are considered housing units, and because of the rent that Stanford charges compared to the median income in the county, they are also considered affordable. And the county has documented in its housing elements that Stanford has built 816 affordable housing units on campus between 2000 and 2014. Looking ahead, of the 3,150 housing units that Stanford has requested for approval, it's anticipated that about 900 of those would be graduate students' beds, and they will most likely be in the apartment style that we've been constructing lately. And given that the rents that Stanford charges is about 40% of the current market value, it's anticipated that these would also fulfill the county's rena requirements in their future housing elements. In addition to building affordable housing, Stanford does contribute to an affordable housing fund that's managed by the county in order to support the construction of housing in the local community. And this payment to the county is accrued every time Stanford adds academic square feet to campus. To date, more than $25 million has gone to the county, and it's anticipated that amount will grow to $39 million by the time the academic square feet is built out. And the county has dispersed more than $13 million of this to four projects in Palo Alto and one in Mountain View that together had supported 319 new housing units, affordable housing units, in those two cities. Stanford has proposed to continue that contribution to the county's Affordable Housing Fund at a rate of $20 a square foot against the academic square feet and increasing with inflation each year. And using those amounts and assuming that the academic square feet take 17 years to build out, it's anticipated that would generate $56 million to go to the county to be dispersed in the community. And as you know, it's a little bit unique to have a single project both build affordable housing and contribute to affordable housing in the community. Usually, projects do one or the other. As I mentioned before, we have a high-level policy in our Stanford Community Plan about no net new commute trips, and this means that Stanford does not increase commute trips in the peak hour in a campus commute direction from a baseline level that was established in 2001. This high-level policy direction was reinforced in the 2000 general use permit where it became a performance standard mitigation measure. These trips are physically measured. The county hires an independent consultant that, at their direction, monitors these trips each year. And there are actually two types of trips that are measured. There are the trips that are removed from the campus itself, coming to and from campus. There are also trips that are removed from the local roadway, kind of the impact area around campus, including Palo Alto, that they come off the road because of Stanford's efforts, like the Marguerite Shuttle. And it's those two types of trips that together determine whether Stanford meets its no net new commute trip goal. And despite adding more than 1 million square feet, Stanford has met this no net new commute trip goal every year since 2001. So the way that Stanford's been able to do this is to continue to invest in and evolve its transportation demand management program, continuing to add new options, new to the menu over time, and Stanford recognizes that's going to have to continue into the future to be innovative and continue to invest in this program in order to meet the goal. There is one slight change in the application to what happened in 2000. As I mentioned, the first place that trips are counted is at the core campus itself, sometimes known as the cordon, and that's shown in the pink area. So those are the first place that trips are removed. But then, in addition, you can see the green impact area when Stanford's efforts take trips off the road from that area as well. What's new for this application is Stanford's proposed that if no net new commute trips is not met through those two methods, Stanford would pay a fee to Santa Clara County, who could then disburse that money for other community-based transportation demand management programs like investments in public transit or improvements to bike and ped facilities. So very similar to the affordable housing fee where they would control that money and disburse it. And Stanford would need to pay that fee any year it did not meet its no net new commute trip goal. So there'd be continued incentive to continue to meet it, but if Stanford didn't, it would pay into that fund. And that was really to guarantee that the congestion impacts were going to be addressed. As Jean mentioned, there's no change to the high-level policy direction in the community plan. There are a couple of very small changes that are more cleanup action items with regard to land use designations and zoning for the campus driving range and nine faculty homes on campus, just to better reflect their current use. The application also suggests deletion of some of the text in the housing section of the community plan because it's been effectively superseded by the county's housing element. And lastly, the application includes a request to build -- for Stanford to build the suggested routes to school improvements on its land that are next to Nixon and Escondido schools. So just stepping back a minute, the application submitted in November has a lot of different components. What I've been talking about here is all contained in the project description, which is Tab 3. But while Stanford was developing its, you know, thinking about its development request and what to put in the application, we also did a lot of technical environmental studies so that we would understand the potential environmental impacts of what we were requesting. And those analyses helped shape our request, and we've also provided them in our application so that the county and the public could review them. The county will be conducting -- having its experts do an independent review of these studies as well. So they're available there on the web if anyone's interested in looking them. I'm going to touch on just four of them and give you some quick highlights of them, and that's going to be vehicle miles traveled, greenhouse gases, water supply, and parks and recreation. So as you know, the state is moving to a new way of looking at transportation impacts and its vehicle miles traveled, moving away from congestion types of impact analysis. And the reason for this is it's to encourage infill development and decrease sprawl in order to reduce emissions and get cars off the road. And the state is looking at a threshold standard of having a project meet 15% below the current VMT average for our region. And in that way, if you can bring people 15% below, it will help remake the state's greenhouse gas goals for that time. So Stanford did conduct a vehicle miles traveled analysis and found that we're doing -- we will, at full buildout, do much better than that 15% reduction. Stanford's average commuter VMT will be 75% below the current regional average, and the VMT of our campus residents will be 40% below the regional average. And these numbers are really just quantification of the benefits that happen when Stanford gets its population out of its cars, either through TDM or by providing housing on or near campus. So as Jean mentioned, the flexibility of the general use permit provided Stanford the opportunity to make a huge impact in the area of greenhouse gas emissions, and that was the development of the Cessy Project, and which created a new heat recovery facility used for heating and cooling of campus, and it replaced a natural gas-fired cogeneration facility. The immediate impact of that was to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions associated with campus heating and cooling and electricity use by 50% immediately. And then, because it's fueled by electricity, there's an opportunity to continue to provide more emission reduction as the electricity supply gets greener. And as, you know, to support this, Stanford developed a solar farm in Kern County and installed rooftop panels on campus, and together, those two projects will supply more than 50% of Stanford's electricity demand, which takes the emission reductions from 50% to 68%. Looking forward, we also did a greenhouse gas technical analysis in the application. So the state of California has created greenhouse gas goals for the state in 2020 and 2030. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District took that state goal for 2020 and converted it into a per capita efficiency standard in order to help support that goal. And so the district decided -- they determined that if, in our region, if we could get to 4.6 million metric tons of carbon in 2020, that we could support the 2020 goal of reaching 1990 levels of emission, of greenhouse gas emissions. Stanford will have, instead of the 4.6 goal, 2.5 million metric tons of carbon per person while meeting that goal. And then, if you use a similar analysis for 2030, the state -- we would need to, as a region, get to 2.7 million metric tons of carbon in order to meet the very aggressive goal of 40% reduction below 1990 levels in 2030. And looking at after buildout of Stanford's development request, being at 1.8 million metric tons, again, well below that aggressive standard for greenhouse gases. That's on a per capita basis, but also, if you just look at total greenhouse gases, not on a per capita, we will achieve no increase -- I mean, there will be no increase in greenhouse gases from today despite the buildout of the development request. Another performance standard in the 2000 general use permit was that associated with water. There was a desire for Stanford to stay within its hetch-hetchy allocation of 3 million gallons per day, and when we began in 2000, Stanford was using about 2.7 million gallons per day of water. And then, of course, it was expected to increase as we developed housing and academic facilities on campus. But Stanford underwent very robust conservation programs, and as a result, despite adding a million square feet of academic facilities and 2,000 housing units, the water use went from 2.7 million gallons per day down to 1.9, a 30% reduction between 2000 and 2015. It went actually lower last year to 1.8 million gallons per day, which is about half of the water use in 2000. The application also includes a water supply assessment. The state requires that you make sure if you propose a development, there is sufficient water, both in normal and multiple drought years, and the water supply assessment that we include in the application does show there's sufficient potable and non-potable water demand even with buildout of the development request. And finally, the application includes a parks and recreation study in order to determine any potential impacts from future campus residents that would be added to campus and their use of neighborhood parks. And so through use of a survey, we determined the amount our current campus residents are using in the neighborhood parks, and then created metrics in order to forecast what our future residents would do, and compared it in order to determine whether there would be significant deterioration of any of those neighborhood parks, and found that there would not be an environmental impact under CEQA. But we also noticed that there was kind of a higher proportion of use in the college terrace parks because of the residences located in that general area. And so in the application, Stanford has offered to pay for the improvements to the college terrace parks that are included in the Palo Alto's capital budget.
So our last slide, it shows a graphic here that is trying to reveal the review process that will happen over the next many months, probably through about a year or so from now. Circle up at the top left is a date back in June of 2016, when Stanford hosted a number of open houses in the community before we actually put this application together for submission to the county. The very light circle on the road there, number 2, is when we submitted the application in November. The county now has a requirement for an application like this to hold an early community meeting to present information about the application. That was the meeting we held on January 25 at Mitchell Park Community Center. We were very pleased to have over 100 people come to that meeting. And on February 8, the county hosted a meeting that it holds to receive comments from the public as to what the environmental impact report should study, and obviously, your meeting this evening is to focus on that same aspect. While the draft EIR is being prepared by the county consultants, and that's kind of where the red box -- red ball and arrow is showing there, Stanford intends to actively offer additional meetings with other local cities, with community groups, with anyone who would like to hear about the application and give us direct feedback about it. Circle number 6 on there, there's no date assigned to this, but this is the point in the process when the county will issue a draft environmental impact report, and that will then become available to the community to review, the work that the county's consultant has done, and its analysis of all of the relevant impact issues. There will be public hearings at that stage conducted by the county to receive community comments about that draft. The county's consultant will take all of those comments and questions, respond to them, and issue a final environmental impact report. That document will then go through, again, additional public hearing meetings with the County Planning Commission and ultimately with the Board of Supervisors, and that final EIR needs to be reviewed and considered by both of those entities before any decision is made on the final application. So again, we haven't assigned any dates to any of this because we don't know quite what -- how long it will take and what dates will come up, but we're at best thinking sometime a year from now is when this will be getting ready for decision-making. So with that, we're open and available to answer questions.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. We have a number of members of the public who'd like to speak. So let's go to the public. Fred Balin, to be followed by Herb Barak.
Thank you. Talk first a little bit about the foothills. We have the foothills district within the Stanford lands, those across Unipacera, and we have foothills park of Palo Alto. An analogy was made between the foothills in both jurisdictions. Foothills Park is controlled by a charter amendment to the city of Palo Alto, and it cannot be used for any other purpose unless there's a vote of the people in the majority for that purpose. The foothills district is constrained by a term in your document that there will be no change in the academic growth boundary through the duration of the general use permit. There is a higher level of control above that in the community plan, which is the area plan of their general plan, analogous to ours. And that says, well, at any time, they can change it if four or five supervisors vote to change the academic growth boundary. But the other one that was put in 2000 after big discussion was that there will be no change in the academic growth boundary for 25 years and until the housing, the building area of academic and support facilities and student housing reaches 17 million 300,000 square feet. Well, we're not, we're not renewing that, we are just extending it. So in 2025, the first condition passes unless something changes. As far as the 17.3 million square feet are concerned, well, we have information, again, in the community plan that the expectation for this project at the end of this period would be that there would be, let's see, they would be 3.5 million square feet, there'd be 1.5 million square feet short. So under the new application, they, under the old application, they haven't used about 600 square feet of academic space. But it doesn't only count academic space, it's also housing space for students. So we have 1.8 million being put into four 10-story towers over the Escondido Village. Three quarters of that will be new. That's going to add up about another 1.5 million square feet. The point is, by the time we get to 2025, both conditions will be gone and there'll be no guarantee that there won't be any application proposal that can come through to have growth in the foothills. We need to have a long-term agreement as part of the general use permit that there will not be development in the foothills district. All right, let's go on to traffic. I think there's a good point in here in the staff report in that we should be looking at increasing the length of the peak hours. We're now looking at one-way commute trips, a two-hour stretch. We're going to have a campus that's going to be running at many, many hours during the day. We really need daily counts, and we're particularly concerned in college terraces. So we want, did you realize, am I three minutes or two minutes?
Three minutes, but you're three minutes.
That was three minutes?
That was three minutes.
Okay, well, I sent my points into the county. And obviously, if they can get the new, the no net new commute trips at the same level without loosening, you know, the top level that they have now and do it again, I'll come back and eat my hat.
Thank you. Herb Barak, to be followed by Stephen Woodward.
Mayor Shaw and council members, city staff says there's a deadline to respond, but I can't see what the deadline is in any of the staff reports that you received. Stanford campus and lands are part of Palo Alto's planning area in the comprehensive plan. And the appropriate process for submitting comments to the county should have been followed, which is, on a timely basis, the planning commission should have received this issue and made a recommendation to the council. And then the council, on the basis of the planning and transportation commission recommendation, should have given direction to staff to write a letter. And that hasn't happened, even though it's been three months since the application was filed and eight weeks since the notice of preparation was issued. And I hope in the future that the council can give appropriate direction to staff to follow that kind of process for planning issues. Stanford presentation mentioned no net new trips. Well, one way they've accomplished that is by moving some operations off of the campus into Palo Alto and now some to Redwood City. But I just want to focus on the Palo Alto planning area because it's the same local transportation network. Based upon the experience of what happened under the current use permit, it seems that the EIR should include data on Stanford development within the city of Palo Alto, similar to the historical data that's shown for the campus in the current use permit and community plan for the medical center and for the research park and for the East Bay Shore Employment District, and that projections for those areas for the term of the use permit should also be shown. The second item of data refers to the fact that there may be creative ways for Stanford to get more development in the Palo Alto planning area outside of the campus in exchange for moving the academic growth boundary and having fewer acres within that boundary. But to be able to do that, we would need information on what land is under the founding grant, which can't be sold, and which land is not in the founding grant and is alienable land that can be sold anytime the board of trustees wants to do that. Because that will enable trades within the Stanford property based upon planning approvals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make two quick points. This is the second GUP in the years I've lived in Palo Alto, which has, involves a major expansion of Stanford buildings without mention of a ultimate buildout for the campus. At the long-term growth rate, Stanford daily population will double in approximately 60 years. It's hard to imagine that the, that important TDM goals, for example, will not be blown by in the course of that level of expansion. Secondly, I think it's interesting that the, the current GUP proposal anticipates exceeding the TDM, the no net new trips limits. The, the, those limits will not be exceeded in a generally diffuse way around the campus. They will impact certain entries and exits to the campus more severely than others. So I would like to see very careful traffic analysis on areas that will be specifically impacted, such I think college terrace is an obvious area that needs to be considered very carefully. The ability to mitigate change, the impacts on college terrace are quite limited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we return to council for questions and comments. Council member Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation. That was helpful. I know you've been doing lots of workshops around the community and across the county. A few comments and a few questions. So first, looking over this data and seeing at some of the meetings, I think it's worth noting and celebrating that in many cases, Stanford has some of the best opportunities across the entire county to do low transit, low-impact growth going forward, actually. And that, in a way, is something to be celebrated and modeled for other communities. Stanford has a robust TDM program, VMT is lower, it's producing more affordable housing than many of the other entities across this county. I think it's something to be celebrated and something that isn't brought up quite enough. There are some questions about the methodology behind the no new net trips issue, and my neighbor Fred Balin brought those up. I think it would behoove Stanford to share those measures explicitly and kind of get feedback from some residents. There's a letter from the South Gate neighborhood to council on this issue about really kind of being a little more explicit on the timing and how those measures are made. I think that would be helpful. A few questions. So one, what issues does Stanford foresee with the county? What, what feedback have you heard from county planning so far on this GUP?
I think they believe, as we do, that the framework that we've established has been very successful. I can think one piece of feedback we received is that they appreciate the ability we have to look at things comprehensively and solve things comprehensively because of the land holdings. And to increase that wherever possible, we established a number of measures in 2000. We are going to be addressing historic resources in the same way so that, we are doing that to respond to their comment to continue to look at things comprehensively.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my last question is kind of about that academic growth boundary. So as I've understood it, it does expire in 2025 with some extra conditions. What's Stanford's thoughts on that? Is that purposeful? Would you be willing to extend it further? How do you see that decision coming to bear on your plans?
So I just want to make clear that the academic growth boundary doesn't expire or, or go away. It stays in place as, as long as the plan's there. I think what people are referring to is that there's a certain standard for asking to move it. So it, it, it just doesn't go away.
Okay. So, so then I would encourage you to be a little more, to be upfront about that, saying, you know, the, the conditions do change in 2025, and here's how they change, and here's what we might be asking for.
It's the thing that, that one of the speakers alluded to, there is, up until 2025, any proposal to change it would need a four out of five votes at the board of supervisors. And after 2025, it goes back to their normal majority, but the, but the academic growth boundary doesn't go away.
Okay, so it's a one-vote change. Okay, that's helpful. Otherwise, you know, I, I think this is a helpful plan. I like having Stanford in Palo Alto. I think you guys contribute a hell of a lot here. And I hope this is helpful to you, too.
Vice Mayor Ness.
Thank you all for coming. It's a bit of deja vu, but it's interesting. It sounds to me as though it very much mirrors the 2000 GUP, am I right? Especially in growth. So two or three things. The TDM in particular, especially, I don't know if you can pull up the slide on the TDM again, David, or not, but that was particularly interesting in what you have done. Did you, did you model that on any other university's TDM? Were there others? Because I've heard that Harvard has to have one, among others, and apparently it's not uncommon for universities to now have this kind of, of, of a formal plan for, for transportation.
The, actually, as, as you would recall, there was a, a general use permit before the 2000 general use permit. It was the 1989 general use permit. And that had quite a bit of content in it going as far back as that around transportation measures. And because it was the first step of recognizing that that was probably the more significant performance standard to look at than just square feet per se or population per se. I think we can claim being ahead of any other university in the country.
Certainly ahead of Harvard, yes.
Yeah, in, in what we've done on a, you know, a continued improvement plan, so to speak, and adding new programs. I think the most significant one, as you all are aware, is when the Caltrain developed the Go Pass program, which allows employers to buy passes for their employee population. And we were the first, actually, it was really initiated by a partnership between the university and Caltrain to start that program. And now many other employers are using it as well. So again, I think one of the, the strengths of this has been that while the performance standard of no new net trips is very clear, and as Catherine said, a 2001 baseline figure that we measure against, the exact techniques we use and the tools we use have been left to us and the flexibility of the university to figure out what, what really is the most effective. And I think that's one of the hallmarks of why this has been as successful as it's been.
So because we're moving in that direction so definitively, I think it's important for us to hear what, what you have done and how you've accomplished that because I think we can borrow from that. So Jean, this one's particularly for you because I remember being at a meeting together, it could be six years ago now, but we talked a lot about Caltrain at the time. And as you know, the electrification looks like it's in trouble. How do we pay for grade crossings? We have passed measure B. Tell us, what, what other involvement do you think Stanford would plan to have with Caltrain? Because it's, it seems to me, at least, I'll make, you know, I'll surmise, that the, for the TDM to work well, you really need Caltrain. I don't know how many riders you anticipate you have a day, but, you know, we would like to see that, we'd like to see those two improvements made possible somehow. And it's, it's been very frustrating for any of us who've sat around for a long time and, and watched Caltrain in particular not make a lot of strides over the last few years.
Well, I know you know this statistic, but the University Avenue train station in Palo Alto is the most heavily-used Caltrain on and off boarding station anywhere on the line between San Francisco and San Jose by a huge factor. And certainly some of that is employees coming to downtown Palo Alto, but a huge part of that is the university's support for the program, bringing employees to campus. We are very concerned, as you are, of the, you know, the challenge to the funding for the electrification. We think the increase in Caltrain's capacity by 20%, which is what that electrification program is promising to provide in 2020, is vital for us, it's vital for the region. We have, our president, Mark Tessier-Lavigne, wrote a letter to Washington, along with many others, in the last month, speaking up on that point on behalf of the university. We have other ongoing engagements with other employers. There's a group called the Caltrain Commuter Coalition, which is a group of companies, including Stanford as a, as an employer, wanting to continue to help Caltrain think about its long-term funding options and what should be thought about in terms of that, that long-term future. So we're very, not, not in a big, visible, public way particularly, but we're very involved in working on these issues with Caltrain.
So we will, some of us will be in Washington in a couple of weeks, and on our agenda is exactly that, to talk to whomever we think may be influential about, about California.
I think it has to be Republicans, if you know any of them.
Actually, there are a number on our list. But I, we think that, that this is so critical that we're really kind of stunned that, that this has happened like that when it was, was so clearly on our, on our agenda for such a long time. One lighthearted question, are you going to let Lake Log fill this year or not?
It is full, if you haven't been over there to see it.
I guess I haven't, right?
Yeah, no, it is full. I mean, it, it fills, it fills with runoff from the foothills, and we haven't had a lot of that in the last years. So I don't know if you're aware, but it, it is filled in accordance to support the California tiger salamander reproduction. So in those years when the eggs, they have bread and there are eggs in the lake and it's about to dry up and those eggs are going to be sacrificed, we do fill it in order to support that reproduction. But it hasn't been filled in many years in the traditional recreational sense.
So this year it filled naturally?
It filled naturally, yeah.
Now I'll have to go take a look.
Yeah.
Okay, one, one more issue that comes up on a constant basis, and it came up at our, Eric and I were at a school liaison, city school liaison meeting on Thursday morning. And the discussion is, how will this affect the number of kids in our schools? And will it be to the extent that the school board needs to look differently at any number of schools they may have or how they may go forth in the future, planning for the schools and for whatever number of kids it is? So maybe you can help us with a breakdown of what you anticipate from families versus, you know, those who are single students living in a different kind of situation.
So I mentioned So, I mentioned, we were requesting 3,150 housing units. And while we don't have exact numbers, we think that there would be no more than 550 faculty-staff units. We don't expect any of the student units, even the graduate student units, to involve families. We have sufficient housing on campus for our student families. So, any of the school-aged children would be associated with those 550 units that could be built. So, in the application, we use the district's rate of a half a student per, it's likely very high-density housing, and so it could be up to 275 students in that time period.
Yeah, that, one of the things we wanted, it may not be as clear as we could have made it, is that the 550 are not single-family homes. They will, it'll be a dense apartment-style set of buildings over on the sites over on Quarry Road, near the shopping center. So, and obviously, exactly what size units these will be, which population we're serving, all of that is, you know, part, will be part of an ongoing process. When they would come online? This is one of the things we do now with the school districts, which we meet with them on a regular basis to give them much more specific data on when specific housing units that might have families are being built, like the ones we're building in Palo Alto today for faculty. We're regularly talking with them about those units and when they're potentially going to be occupied. So, we keep them posted so that their annual enrollment forecasting is being kept up to date.
Includes that.
Yep.
Because one of the things we were looking at is that five- or 10-year stretch, having a closed high school that has, that we're still in a lease situation with. And so, looking at something like that, because that helped, that was a major decision point over the last few years. So, that would really, really help us. So, I don't want to make this up, but are you saying roughly 300 kids, maybe?
I think the application assumes if we built the 550 faculty-staff, it's, I think, .5, so 275.
Yeah, somewhere in that range. Okay, thank you, and again, thanks for being here tonight.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, thank you very much for being here and for doing such hard work on this, and for holding a good number of public forums. I really appreciate that. I do have some questions. And just to start somewhere, you mentioned something about the Stanford driving range, and I didn't quite catch what you said around that.
So, the application includes changing the land use designation and the zoning for that. Currently, it's designated for medium-density housing, and it's in academic use, and it's anticipated to stay in academic use. So, it's just changing to that land use designation and zoning.
So, it takes me to something else that was referenced. And on the last GUP, there were changes made to the golf course and also to the driving range. And I noticed in looking at the map, there aren't slide numbers on these pages, but I notice, and a couple of them caused me to kind of go, hmm, what about that? I'm just wanting to understand if there are going to be changes that will minimize or lessen the access or facility of the driving range, the golf course, the Stanford barn and exercise ring, the tennis courts, anything that's currently in terms of, on the campus, having to do with exercise facilities, is anything going to be reduced? Because as the population grows, that use is going to, you know, you're saying it's, the impact's going to stay on campus and not in the community, so is it going to remain as is now?
So, the golf course itself is outside the academic growth boundary. So, there's nothing proposed to change that. And there's, there's nothing really proposed to change the academic, or the athletic facilities. We recognize that as we add more students to campus, we, that's another need that happens when we add students.
So, I understand, you're saying you recognize the need, but I don't hear a, we're not going to lessen the facilities.
To go back to the driving range point, is the present zoning that was adopted in 2000 tentatively could make that a housing site. And what we're changing is to take it out of that designation so that it remains an academic facility, and recreation uses are part of our academic facilities. So, it's basically putting it back into a category that establishes that's the continued, you know, purpose of it, as a recreational facility. You know, whether a particular tennis court gets moved, I don't think we have any answers to that. That's a, I'm not aware of any such plans, but could we move a tennis court in the future? It could happen.
I don't care if it's moved, just as long as it isn't lessened in numbers.
Right.
So, you've known me for a long time, Jean. So, understanding that you're changing the zoning so that it can stay in academic use, but is the intention to keep it in athletic facility and not as a part of the academic buildings, for instance, an expansion there?
To my knowledge, the answer to that is yes. There's, I'm not aware of any proposed to change, change the use at the driving range.
Okay, all right, very good. And then, appreciate the, to stay on that same kind of topic, to appreciate what you were saying about making contributions to the college terrace, CIP funding. I think one of the needs that we have, and let's just suppose, because I think especially in college terraces, perhaps in expanded area, too, there might be some spillover of academic, excuse me, of recreational need. Would Stanford consider instead looking to help purchase some park facilities within the city that might be impacted? Or might, in other words, a face demand that might be created?
I think the EIR will need to look at that question. As Catherine said, our own internal study and survey of how much use is being made from campus residents outside is, we're not seeing an impact, but that's certainly a fair question for the EIR to look at.
Would really like that to be one of the considerations, please. The, and I think members of the public had broached the subject, too. What's the ultimate build-out? I mean, here we are, just 18 years later, and we're looking at another 2 million square feet of expansion. So, what's Stanford looking at in terms of ultimate build-out? What can the community expect? I mean, it can't go forever, right? And, of course, you've gone to Redwood City for some of the expansion of the broader Stanford campus, but what's an ultimate build-out?
Well, not to be flip about it, but how would the city of Palo Alto answer that question? I mean, most planning, long-term planning, takes a look at a long-term increment forecasting as best you can for a reasonable period, what you think is going to occur and what may be needed, and then you look at it again. Now, whether, you know, other constraints, water, you know, carrying capacity will change what, you know, somebody 30, 50 years from now may project is possible. I think that, I would expect that would be the case. I don't think we have that concept, that there's, that it's, that today, we say, we know there's some, there's some point at which we know it's exactly this. It's really doing the responsible, long-term thinking for a reasonable, long-term forecasting, you know, for what the university expects it needs.
And I didn't mean it to be a flip question, I truly didn't, so.
I didn't mean it to be a flip answer.
And I understand that, we're good. I guess what I was looking for is something else to be looked at, either by Stanford or in the EIR, is there will be limits in terms of, you know, water supply, you know, land available without broaching the urban growth boundary. I mean, there are some limitations that exist. So, what is that, what is that limit? And when do you anticipate that that might be reached? And I'm not saying, you know, the year 2051, I'm just, you know, give us, give us some idea, give us some kind of parameter of what we can expect there. And one of the things that's, things that's been broached for, speaking of water, a different aspect of it, something that's been broached several times, it still is a concern, especially as we're looking at different solutions for bridge construction having to do with flooding, is an upstream catch basin to help alleviate flooding concerns in that San Francisco Creek. So, it's not necessarily an EIR question, but it's a question having to do with what community benefits Stanford would consider providing to the long-term health and well-being of the neighboring community, as we are neighbors to each other. The no net new trips, there have been some good comments made about that. There was reference, and I can't remember where I read this, I think it may have even been in what was provided to us by you already, is expanding the peak hour, hours. As I was on Page Mills Road at 2:40 in the afternoon, coming, coming east, not even going west, coming east, watching the traffic going west, I was astounded at how far it backs up. From 2:80, it backed up all the way to Foothill, and then there was like a block and a half break, and then it was backed up all the way again, almost to Al Camino at 2:40 in the afternoon. So, expanding the peak hours, I think, is essential to understanding traffic management and traffic demand management. You are in a unique position, as has well been stated, that you, you can take a comprehensive look at that. Also, having to do with that is, is there going to be any peer review of TDM success? And it's not to question Stanford's capability, but I think it's just a good community standard that, you know, when any, when anybody comes forward with a project or proposal, whether they do the consultant report, or whether the city provides it, one or the other provides peer review. So, I think it's a good community foundation to indicate how peer review will be done to determine the success of TDM programs. I know you'll be looking at, well, I can skip that one. The housing, I'd be understanding as a part of the EIR, whether the housing's going to be built ahead of the demand that more academic buildings will create, how the housing will or will not be provided to at least first access to workers, staff, and teachers, that would be Stanford staff. And as a part of the EIR, please lead the way, because Palo Alto has not been good at this, please lead the way to count as a part of your environmental impact report what the greenhouse gas impacts are of construction and demolition. It's a real measurable thing, and I would appreciate Stanford leading the way on that as we look to you to lead many things. And I may be close to, I know you'll be looking at this, I will, so I know you'll be looking at ways to expand access to the campus through, whether it's express buses from East Bay, you'll be looking at all those different, different measures. There is something, and I had mentioned this to you guys when we, when we met previously, is because Stanford had an impact and would continue to have an impact on college terraces and perhaps to a lesser extent on Evergreen Park, Stanford is a part of the last, one of the earlier proposals, contributed $100,000 to studying traffic impacts in college terraces. And there was, after that study was conducted, an RPP put in place in college terraces. The city now, that need was determined, and the city now funds that on an annual basis. So, I think it's reasonable to ask Stanford to help pay for that annual RPP program in, it's a little bit redundant, the RPP in college terraces and perhaps to a lesser extent in Evergreen Park. And surely, if we go back to former data, we can determine what a reasonable share of that might be. I think those are my points. Thank you so very much.
Councilmember Phil Sa.
Hi. And thanks very much, folks, for coming out and doing this and spending this evening with us. I have a couple of questions about the housing, which is, there's 3,150 units, of which 550 are earmarked for post-docs and faculty and staff. So, where do the other 2,600 go? Is that all undergrads and grad students, or is there?
Yeah, so it would be assumed now to be undergraduate and graduate students.
Good. So, at the end of that, do you folks, I mean, I know the Escondido expansion was to bring a lot of grad students on campus. At the end of this, are basically all the grad students housed on campus?
No, it would still be around the 75%.
Around, okay, good. Okay, and then, how many, so in the 2 and 1/4 million square feet of expansion, how many, how many jobs do you folks anticipate that producing, right? Not including, like, grad students, but like, sort of, regular job kind of stuff?
I don't have the number off the top of my head. There is a tab in the application that shows the anticipated population that would come as a result of this development request. And it breaks it down by the undergraduates, the graduates, and staff and faculty. So, I don't have it right here, but I think it's Tab 5, yeah.
Tab 5, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks very much.
Councilmember Walbach.
Thank you very much for the presentation. A couple of questions. First, when is exactly the deadline? I just want to make sure I was clear. When is the deadline to submit comments to the county?
Thank you, Councilmember Walbach. The county was generous enough to give us to close a business on March 10th.
Okay. And is there still any opportunity for this to be heard by the PTC in the next, it sounds like, just a couple of weeks? Maybe not, but just.
Yeah, I don't think we could make, we could swing that. They do have a meeting on the 8th, but it's, it's pretty full.
And on counts, I do think that, you know, if we can get, you really, you know, full counts, full day counts, both inbound and outbound, I think that's important, rather than just looking at peak periods. But if we have, of course, nuance of, you know, when they're happening as well, that would be excellent. Looking at some public comments, I didn't have a chance to cross-reference in the text itself, but just wanted to check, was the six-mile limit for use of affordable housing funds dropped?
So, the six-mile radius for the affordable housing was part of the 2000 GUP. In our application, we made a suggestion that it be along transit corridors and other, to further all of the important benefits that come with that. That's Stanford's proposal. I think that will kind of shake itself out in the process.
I'm not sure if I fully understand that. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit more?
In.
I mean, is it, are you, is it, is it Stanford's proposal that we drop the six-mile radius in exchange for doing it along transit corridors? Or is it in addition to transit corridors, or a slightly larger radius along transit corridors, so that it has to do with time of transit? Or how does, how are you looking at that?
The application was going to say, instead of the six-mile radius, put it along transit corridors. And, you know, that was a thought, just because of our focus recently, and I think that other, going back to the six-mile could be considered. I think that's what I'm saying, it could shake out in, I mean, the most important thing is that Stanford is committed to putting the money in the fund, and probably, we're less concerned about where it's spent. We just thought, from our judgment, it made sense along transit corridors.
Okay. So, you know, speaking just, you know, for myself, but maybe something we would consider for, in comments and encouraging, I would suggest both. That it would be within six miles, and it also emphasize along transit corridors, whether it's, you know, strengthening those transit corridors so that they can be more effective. I mean, just, was it last week we were talking about, or two weeks ago, we were talking about a project on Al Camino, and, you know, I raised my, you know, concerns with Al Camino and how we can see it be a more effective transit corridor. So, if Stanford, you know, it's when we're talking about both the, the, you know, the contributions that Stanford makes towards improving our transit corridors and Stanford's contribution to our, our housing funds, I think, kind of, you know, thinking about how those coordinate is important, obviously. I know that you're well aware of that. And I'll just speak to why I think it's important to maintain this six-mile radius. The proximity of Stanford to Palo Alto is one of the major contributing factors, I think, to the demand to live in Palo Alto and to live close to Stanford, whether it's long transit corridors or not. That helps contribute, along with, you know, many other things that make Palo Alto a wonderful place. It contributes to the high cost of housing here, making, you know, the acquisition of land for affordable housing in Palo Alto particularly challenging. And so, I think that maintaining that six-mile radius is still worthwhile. And on Caltrain electrification, will Stanford work with us to make sure that Caltrain gets electrified? electrified no matter what?
I want to hear the answer.
Again, as I said earlier, we're very, we're, are strong supporters of it, beyond trying to, you know, push the advocacy, or help others with the advocacy, to get the traditional methods of funding these things, which is, you know, not new, that you put together federal, state, and, and local money to make these projects happen, which we still think that's the right, you know, societal investment on this. If that truly is not possible, obviously, we're going to be part of a discussion of what, what comes next, if that really is, is not going to be the way this project happens.
Okay.
But I can't tell you what that, I don't know what that would mean. I don't think anybody quite knows what the Plan B is, if this truly is a, a kind of roadblock.
But it sounds like you're, you're open to continuing that conversation. In the meantime, a couple more thoughts on that. I didn't catch the name of the group of employers that you mentioned earlier. What was the name?
It's called the Caltrain Commuter Coalition.
Caltrain Commuter Coalition.
And it was formed a number of years ago. The purpose at that time was to address the absence of a secure, consistent sales tax revenue. Many other transit agencies have passed sales taxes, San Mateo County clearly, that give a steady stream of support for their transit programs and their transit facilities. Caltrain has never had that. And that was the origin of the discussion a number of years ago, probably goes back at least five or six years.
And is there anything more you can tell us about how conversations are going with that group?
I don't think that's been an active, you know, obviously several things have stepped in front of that, such as the, the Santa Clara County transportation measure from last year. I mean, there've been other things that have kind of replaced that discussion in terms of, of transportation funding. So, it is not, we, there hasn't been any recent discussion about it. And again, I think their focus understandably has been to try to get this electrification funding from the federal government.
Okay. And a couple of other thoughts, picking up on something you mentioned earlier, which is, you know, frankly, the Republican Party controls the executive branch, as well as the legislature and, you know, the Congress in DC. So, you asked me, oh, if we knew any. So, I would just mention, or ask, maybe, there's a conservative-leaning institution at Stanford called the Hoover Institution, which probably includes some people who have some connection to DC. And I was curious if you've had any conversations with any of the people there to help share their experience and on-the-ground understanding of the importance of Caltrain electrification with any of their friends?
We have not done that yet.
So, I'd recommend that. And also, actually just looked it up, I'd forgotten it, or maybe hadn't, hadn't, had missed it before, something, you know, I was thinking about, which is that, and a lot of people have been talking about, which is that House Majority Leader Kevin McCarthy essentially uses our area as something of a, a piggy bank, you know, comes here a lot for fundraising. He was from Bakersfield, you know, Central Valley Congressman from the 23rd District, I believe. And I think it's important to make sure that we communicate, as I know, you know, Carl Gardino from the Silicon Valley Leadership Group has been communicating with him, I hope that Stanford will join in communicating with House Majority Leader Kevin McCarthy, to make sure that he understands that Caltrain electrification is not inherently tied to high-speed rail, that has, you know, been separated by the state legislature, that the courts have ruled that it is distinct, and that in order to support Caltrain electrification, one, and Congress and the Department of Transportation need not support high-speed rail. And make sure that, you know, they understand, and that he understands that if our region is going to be able to continue to be economically vibrant and provide the fundraising resources that he wants to do what he does, and to be the influential figure he is in Washington and DC, we're going to need to stay vibrant, we're going to need our transportation to be functioning, and that requires Caltrain electrification. So, I hope you will join in the next, you know, few weeks, as we communicate with Mr. McCarthy and others in Washington, to make sure they understand the gravity of the situation.
Councilmember Koo.
Also, thank you so much for being here and being flexible about the date change and coming back again. And also, thank you for being a leader in a lot of the innovation that you have provided at your campus, and then overflowing to Palo Alto. So, I hope that we get to see you continue with leading in these innovative ideas and implementing it, but also being accountable to the neighboring communities. So, my first question is, was there ever a maximum build-out that was discussed in the 2000 GUP? I know many of us have already asked that, but talking with community members who were involved in the 2000 GUP, there was mentioned that there was a discussion, or maybe even implementation, was there maximum build-out?
So, the Sustainable Development Study that I mentioned that was approved by the county in 2009, it did address the idea of a build-out study. There's a couple of paragraphs in the very beginning, I think, like, starting on page two, that says essentially what Jean said before, that, you know, it, it becomes so speculative, it sense that it's not even helpful, and that's why the Sustainable Development Study looked at the horizon that it did.
So, would also Stanford be, would they consider for the foothills to be foothills and open space in forever?
Thank you.
The foothills are considered an academic resource. There isn't any immediate, there are limited, right now, academic facilities out there. There isn't any plan right now for, you know, any substantial development out there. That's why we're not seeking to move the academic growth boundary. But permanency is something, that's something entirely different.
And what, that's a, that's quite a concern, you know, as, as since no maximum build-out is discussed, or, and I, I understand that it's hard to, to consider what could happen in the future, but yet, you know, that's a very important open space with an ecosystem of its own out there. So, also, in speaking, in, in what you were talking about, you spoke mostly about housing for the students and for your faculty. I didn't hear anything about housing for the workers, you know, your janitors and lower-income staff members, who I understand in some of the community meetings that I've been attending comes from the East Bay. Is there any plans in order to provide that sort of housing for them on campus, since we're also trying to reduce the number of trips that are incoming?
So, traditionally, Stanford's been a residential university since its beginning, and, and the core campus has really been used for students and faculty, and it's part of that living, learning environment, and, you know, really the access to each other in order to continue the teaching and research. Stanford has provided quite a bit of staff housing, but it's outside this core campus area that this permit addresses. So, you know, there's staff housing at Stanford West, and we're, have an application pending in Menlo Park for more. So, you know, when we're, when we're talking about the, the core campus, the priority really is for students and for faculty, because of that mission. And we, I will say, we do seek to support staff in other ways with these TDM programs that are continuing to evolve. And we are hearing the discussions that we've heard at these community meetings, and trying to get a better handle on, you know, exactly what types of solutions might work in terms of, you know, if, if people are coming from the East Bay, you know, how can we support them through TDM as well?
So, talking about TDM, right? You know, there's a group of council members that are going to DC and going to be speaking with some of the, some of the other officials over there about transportation. So, I'd hope that, you know, Stanford would also join in, in terms of pushing for regional transportation that is a little bit more longer-term and strategically thought out, in terms of things like subways. I know these are all long-term things, and there's a lot of funding that might be needed. But it's definitely a good thing that if you can lobby along with the cities that you have boundaries with, then perhaps we can resolve some of these issues in terms of trips and so forth. Can you do that? I mean, we've been talking about Caltrain mostly, and about electrification and funding for that. I think in the bigger picture, in a, on a higher level, I think we have to look at regionally. And just coming up with these little solutions about providing shuttles and providing these busing or TDMs is just a very short-term method. If we're going to continue to grow the way that we are, which, based on your numbers, you can see that it is a large growth, and to be successful at your no net new commute trip goals, it has to be viewed at a bigger level, higher level. So, I hope that you can commit in terms of lobbying state as well as federal for more strategic outlook on transportation. Then there was a gentleman here that spoke about traffic analysis. While there's a lot of good that Stanford does, there's also a lot of negative impacts that the communities surrounding you do, do get to feel. So, one of them is, you speak a lot about VMT. However, I would really like to see that you also take on the LOS as well, what the impacts on our intersections are here in town locally, because that's something that is felt locally. So, while you're saying that we don't, there is no new net commute trips, for us who live here, we don't feel that. We feel there is impact there. So, I hope that you won't just cross out LOS evaluations in your traffic studies and only look at VMT.
Yeah, I, I can clarify. So, the EIR the county will produce will have a level of service analysis, and it will assume that the no net new trips does not work. So, it will disclose the impacts if Stanford is not successful. And then, on top of that, there'll be mitigation to say you would meet no net trips. But those, those congestion impacts will be disclosed in the EIR.
Do you have ongoing traffic analysis after, should the GUP be, the GUP be approved? Is there ongoing traffic analysis that you guys do?
Yeah, well, the county does.
The county does.
So, the county hires and manages an independent consultant who does the no net trips calculation. That's not a Stanford calculation.
Not for you to do, yeah. Lastly, the, that slide on the no, no net new commute trip goal, you said that you, Stanford, if it violates the number of trips, that there is a fund that you have to pay. So, through the, since 2000, have, has there been any violations?
So, under the 2000, we have not.
No.
We've met that goal every year. And the, the idea of a fund is brand-new. It's part of this application.
Oh, for the 2018.
So, right now, yeah, so right now, in the 2000, if Stanford didn't make its no net new trips goal, it would need to provide, pay for its, its proportional share of intersection fixes. It was the, very much the traditional EIR analysis, where you would pay to fix intersections. And, and so, taking that idea and shifting it a little bit, saying, instead of fixing the intersections, why doesn't that money go to having other TDM programs that the community would do?
So, that fund actually goes to county?
It would go to the county, yes.
And county decides how it's going to attribute the funding to whichever city it is. So, Palo Alto would not possibly get it?
So, I think it would be similar to the Affordable Housing Fund, where if, if funds are generated by the county, they could say, we have these funds available. And Palo Alto could say, we've got a program that, you know, we think if we had this funding, we could implement, and it would take these number of trips off the road.
Let me see. Thank you.
Yeah, what, what they've done with the housing fund, and this might be, I mean, this is all a proposal, so obviously it's open to further comment and discussion, but under the housing concept, they accumulate a certain amount of the affordable housing fees or funds, and then they make a notice of availability out to the nonprofit community and say, who would like to propose a project that might use some of this money? So, if that's, if that's a model, that could be the way they handle a transportation program.
If I could interject one thing, that maybe Councilmember Koo is getting to, I think the fund that, that Stanford is proposing accrues in years that you don't meet the goal. But so many transportation programs and projects are contingent on a steady stream of funding, and being able to predict when funding is going to come online, it's going to be a little harder to make valuable use of those funds if it's just, oh, this is the year, and all of a sudden, there's a deposit in the account, if you know what I mean.
Thank you. I also had a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to thank you for the presentation, and I thought the plan was very well thought out. I thought you guys did a really good job. And I think you're going in the right direction, and I think the framework is really well-done. So, with that said, I, I think my only real concerns were, you talked about, Cory touched on the, the six-mile radius issue. And I guess it's a broader issue, is, and you have the fine issue that if you, or not maybe fines, but if you pay, if you exceed the trips, you said you were going to pay into a fund. My concern is that money would go, frankly, far afield in, in Santa Clara County, as opposed to being in this region where the impacts are. And I, I think we need to really look at that. I mean, I, you know, there's four supervisors who have other districts, who obviously need money as well. And so, if the impacts are here, I think the fund should stay here. And I think that's especially true of transportation. I was a little, I would much rather, frankly, have any transportation dollars come to us, so we know how to spend them better, frankly, I think, than the county does, in terms of impacts in Palo Alto. I, you know, I don't necessarily think it's, it's very helpful to have the money just go to the county to be doled out for transportation projects. I mean, I think it'd be much more helpful for us to frankly have it, or at least share that in some way. I, I do think that there will be some impacts on Palo Alto on all of this. And to the extent that it comes in, I would encourage the mitigations, frankly, to be the way we work the hospital issues out, where they were mitigated, we had funds to deal with the mitigations. I think that's a lot easier than, than any other way in solving these, these issues. In looking at the broader issue, I think if there were transportation issues, I would be interested in funding. Obviously, I think it behooves both Stanford and Palo Alto to work together to help with the Stanford Research Park TMA, to the extent that could use more funds, that benefits Stanford. The more we can put money into transportation in the Stanford Research Park, the more we're solving a particular problem. I think that helps college terrorists, I think it helps everyone. And I would also say that frankly, helping the downtown and helping California Avenue, I think we can create linkages between California Avenue and the Research Park, and solve trips in both of those. I think everyone benefits. And so, we're going to need a California Avenue TMA, and to the extent that Stanford can be involved in helping get that off the ground, I think that helps reduce trips. So, I would encourage you to think creatively, and to think how, in going forward on this, this shouldn't be viewed as a, as a negative in some way, but how we can actually reduce trips. Sort of like, I was struck by your water usage, you know, people still talk about there's a, a limit to water. Well, at 2.73, you were coming up against that, that water limit, and you reduced it in half and added a million square feet. So, I don't necessarily think there are limits, I think there just is smart planning that goes along with it. And then, you guys seem to do a really good job with that, and you have the resources to do it. So, I would just encourage you to use those resources to make it a win-win situation for everyone involved. And with that, I think we're, we're done with that item. Thank you very much for coming. And we should get Tom. He's, is he in the back? Someone want to go back?
He's right back there.
Yeah, that's what I figured. And then our next item would be agenda changes and deletions. Staff requested that we remove, that item 11 be continued to March 6, and you requested that the SOBE bike be moved to March 9.
Yes, or 6, no, I'm sorry. It's number 9.
So, March 6 is number, so March 6, and 9 and 11 both be moved to March 6. Is that correct?
That's correct. Now, at this point, if I could be clear on that, that we are anticipating that this, again, item number 9, the SOBE bike item, could remain on consent calendar. So, if there are any questions that councilmembers would like to pose to staff, we have our window to do that, and we can respond accordingly.
Right. And I understood you were moving this because there were some technical issues you needed to resolve in the next week, and also that there were some councilmembers that indicated they may have some questions regarding the SOBE bike issue. So, I would encourage you, if you do, to have those questions answered. So, I believe I need a motion to move items 9 and 11 to March 6.
Someone do it second.
Second, all right? If we could vote on the board? If we could vote on the board. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka absent. Now we have City Manager Cummins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe we've got a graphic we want to show. And I do have a few items I'd like to cover, one of which is related to storm preparation and response. Recognizing the storms over the last week in particular, but also over this entire season to date, we certainly want to acknowledge the challenges that other communities have had. That said, here in Palo Alto, we want to both recognize our good fortune that we have not had significant flooding events. But as I say, it's, sometimes it's better to be lucky than good. But in our case, I would like to say that our staff has been really good in both the preparation and the coordination that's been needed in order to maintain safety in our community. And so I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes going through some of the particular items and actions that the city has been involved with. First, noting that this has been a multi-year effort. Certainly, since the last major flooding in Palo Alto, there has been major capital investment as well as ongoing planning for significant upgrades along the San Francisco Creek. But that said, on an ongoing basis, every year, the city does participate with a number of our partner agencies in preparation, both for avoiding the likelihood of flooding as well as being prepared to respond. So really, over the past, note, four years or so, we have been practicing and coordinating on a regional basis with two counties, at least three cities, and multiple agencies in order to maintain a state of readiness and ability to respond quickly. In particular, over the course of the last year, during the first week of September, the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, or JPA, coordinated its annual two-day walk with cities of East Palo Alto, Menlo Park in Palo Alto, as well as San Mateo County and the Santa Clara Valley Water District to inspect the creek bed between Highway 101 and Sand Hill Road. We have a photo of the walk in the lower-left corner, as well as some of the vegetation that is typically found in the creek bed. As in years past, the city of Palo Alto has participated with these agencies in order to identify the appropriate responsibility and jurisdiction for agencies to do clearing of vegetation where consistent with environmental regulations. And in the past year, gone so far as the city contacting individual property owners to gain rights of entry to trim trees and remove vegetation where the existing easements were not sufficient. During the past year, prior to the storm season within Palo Alto, city staff has completed a number of regular tasks, including checking storm drain outfalls in every creek, assembling sandbags. For distribution, this year, more than 5,000 sandbags were filled with sand by staff, removing trash, and vacuuming all seven of the pump stations to ensure they're functioning, clearing trash capture devices, as well as 3,000 inlet and catch basins. All of these completed before December 1st. Staff also inspected approximately 25 private development sites that have been identified as potential discharge sites for the storm drain system, as well as ongoing routine pruning and tree inspections outside of the creek as well during the course of the year. In terms of emergency preparation, city and particular Office of Emergency Services led a number of regional emergency operations and preparedness workshops in preparation for the season, including a number of exercises to remind and prepare staff from multiple agencies of responsibilities in the case of large events. The simulated exercises have been particularly put to practice during the six storm events to date this season. Whether these events were requiring diligence, in particular, monitoring in the evening, weekends, or whenever it happened to require extra staffing, staff provided this ongoing monitoring of situations and communication among agencies, including weather forecasts through the city's homepage, as well as special flood webpages, and very active and live streaming of information via the city's website. Also conducted ongoing inspections of what we've referred to as the trash rack at West Bay Shore Road at the Highway 101 crossing over San Francisco Creek, as well as coordinating with Caltrans on its repair. We see in the upper-right corner a photo of the damaged trash rack after the last major storm, which both through our direct contact with Caltrans, as well as our state legislative representatives, ensured that Caltrans was aware of the sense of urgency that was needed and followed up very quickly. This past storm on February 7th, the measured flow in San Francisco Creek was roughly 4,800 cubic feet per second, indicated in general in the upper-left photo, where as you see that this flow reached approximately two feet from overtopping flood walls along the creek. Our coordinated efforts with Caltrans, East Palo Alto, the Joint Powers Authority, allowed us to ensure that this situation was monitored and staff was prepared to address specific issues such as localized flooding, as well as levee reinforcement, which is shown in the upper center of the photo, in order to address small leaks that were identified during the storms. So while we're not officially out of the storm season, we certainly want to acknowledge the hard work of our staff in a variety of circumstances in order to maintain our, both, again, our diligence, as well as respond quickly when needed to address storm issues and maintain community safety. Moving on, in terms of looking forward to a few items on the council agenda, as well as items of upcoming information, in the Evergreen Park Mayfield residential permit parking item, wanted to let the council know that, to provide you with a quick status report on the rollout of the Evergreen Park Mayfield RPP program that you approved on January 23rd, staff is finding that the implementation tasks are taking a bit longer than hoped, and specifically that signs will be, which will implement the new parking restrictions, will not be installed until April. This means that enforcement will begin in early May. We'll be using the time between now and then to make sure that residents and employees are informed of the program and to make permits available via our website. We expect that residential permits will be available starting mid-March. Employee permits will be available in three phases. First, to people on the waiting list for lots and garages, then to low-income workers, then to other workers in the program area. We're preparing a mailing to residents and businesses with a precise timeline and program interview, and will disseminate these details, both via the Nextdoor platform as well as our website. Of course, we'll also keep the council informed as this rollout continues. Next, a study that has been anticipated for some time, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention EPIAID study. We expect the final report on this work to be released this Friday. As you will recall, at the beginning of 2016, the Palo Alto Unified School District, with support from the city and Project Safety Net, requested that the Center for Disease Control and Prevention conduct an EPIAID study to better understand youth suicide, both within our city as well as in our region. In collaboration with the Santa Clara County Public Health Department, the EPIAID study has now been completed, and we understand that the report will be released this Friday morning, March 3, on the Santa Clara County Department of Public Health's website. I'll provide the address here, and we'll also distribute it. It's www.sccphd, santa clara county public health department.org/epiaid, E-P-I-a-i-d. The city is working closely with Palo Alto School District and Project Safety Net partners, and will coordinate dissemination of the report, as well as a response to the report's findings after it is released. On March 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., Project Safety Net is planning to host a special community forum on the EPIAID report. Location's yet to be determined, but the meeting will be open to all that are interested. More information will be posted on the psnpalualto.org website. Just a couple more upcoming items of note. Community meetings related to the California Avenue parking garage that is related and being developed in conjunction with the Public Safety Building. On March 8th, two community meetings will be held to present options and gather input for the proposed California Avenue parking garage to be constructed in advance of the planned Public Safety Building. First meeting will be held during the day, 9:30 a.m. at the Palo Alto Central Library Meeting Room, at Palo Alto Central Meeting Room, to 122 Sherman Avenue, Suite A100. Second meeting is, will be held that evening at 6:30 p.m. at the Escondido Elementary School multipurpose room. The information presented at the meetings will be identical, so those interested would only need to attend one of these meetings in order to fit their schedule. And finally, I would just like to note, I'm sure I'm testing your patience here in City Manager Jim Keen's absence, so just wanted to report to you that we all know that his return is eagerly anticipated. He's now, I think, informed all of you, his planned return mid-March, a few weeks longer than originally expected to be out. As we all know, recovery from medical procedure can take its time, and Jim is doing fine, but he's not running. Thankfully, he's not out running yet, so hopefully you won't see him out running on the street. If you do, let me know. And I'll have a conversation with him on that. We have been juggling items on the council agenda so that we can cover the items or actually allow time for Jim to involve himself directly on those items that he's indicated he wants to have personal involvement with. And so as a result, we may be juggling some items to a slightly later date than originally anticipated. Also want to apologize for some of the hiccups that I think you've seen in our choreography of the items and perhaps being a little less nimble in anticipating the time it will take to get things through the council discussion. So with that, I'm sure we all look forward to seeing Jim back, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move to oral communications. We have a number of speakers. You'll each have two minutes. And our first speaker is Beth Bunnenberg, to be followed by C. Reddy.
Hello, Beth Bunnenberg, 2351 Ramona Street, Palo Alto. And I'm speaking tonight as an individual. This is just a brief report to you about the Palo Alto Historical Association, because as you may or may not know, the Historical Association has contract with the city to maintain the archives. And currently, that's located down in Coverley at Room K7. And in addition to that, we have been given the extra job of providing information about Palo Alto to the public. And we have Sunday meetings, once a month, Sunday meetings. And I want to bring to your attention a special one that's coming up. This one is about a very sad series of events that happened about the time of the beginning of the Second World War. And it is the 75th anniversary of the Presidential Order 9066 for the internment of Japanese-American people in isolated camps such as Manzanar, Tulley Lake, and Delta. The program is being presented, and Dick Mansfield, who's well-known, and Mr. Shimamura, who will be describing his actual experiences in one of these camps. These camps produced emotional trauma to the people who were there, produced physical, terrible physical suffering, and of course, financial loss. And this has eerie aspects of things that are going on today. So I hope you'll could come. March the 5th, and you should have announcements up at your place.
Thank you, Beth. C. Reddy is next, followed by Mark Grossman. Good evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All aspiring young people, not necessarily young, everybody comes, they seek education and jobs worldwide. They do not expect to come and be dead, shot by an alcoholic. This happened in Kansas on last Wednesday. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about racism and all that, but I think, more importantly, this gentleman had a chronic alcohol issue. He was depressed with his father being passed away. And I think, how did he get hold of the gun is the question? And who was careless? I think we all need to reflect back on this, and alcoholism plays a major role in many of the elements in our society. And I request that we're all be vigilant, make sure that, you know, we protect them, we give them the help we need, and that way, the victims' families do not suffer the rest of their life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Grossman, followed by Timothy McKehee.
Hello, thank you. I'm Mark Grossman, 2063 Byron Street. I'm here as an individual and representing the leadership and membership of 350 Silicon Valley, a local grassroots climate organization with over, I don't know how many active members, hundreds, with many of them living in Palo Alto. I'm here to ask the city to create a measure to move financial services and holdings to an institution not funding the Dakota Access Pipeline. As taxpayers, a lot of us want to make sure our city invests its money according to the values of the city, which largely are extremely environmentally positive. The Dakota Access Pipeline project is, harms not only the local communities, Native American land, some of it sacred, but it also harms the climate, and it can come right back and affect Palo Alto. Building, completing this pipeline, it conveys some of the dirtiest fossil fuels on Earth for production, and would be the equivalent of creating 30 new coal-fired power plants. Climate change has already affected us. It'll contribute to extended droughts, which we've seen, and to severe flooding, which we've also seen, and we're due for more drought. Earlier this month, hundreds of people appeared in front of City Hall. Councilman Wallback spoke in support of our demonstration, must call it that, in front of the banks downtown. And so I'm asking to continue to green Palo Alto and take this additional step. Thank you.
Thank you all. Hang on just a minute. Are you Timothy? Yes, come on up. What we'd appreciate is that you don't clap, or boo, or cheer, because whomever is at the mic may be intimidated by that. So we'd appreciate that. You can wave your hand or something, indicate support or not support. Thanks. Welcome.
Thanks. Hi, my name's Tim McKehee. I'm a dentist in Palo Alto, and I'm here to speak again about the RPP program in Evergreen Park. I recognize that this is a really important community program. City Council hopefully also recognizes that it is, as written, has serious consequences. The parking needs of our dental practices were not considered or even discussed in setting this program up. We are left without the opportunity to purchase any parking permits. Yet companies that have been here a shorter amount of time and have a bigger impact on the parking are able to purchase these permits. This is not fair. It's not right. And over 1,100 people have signed a petition saying so. And I think you guys have gotten that petition and the information from that. Without permits, our patients will have to park in the neighborhood. This is inconvenient to them, but more importantly, it doesn't make much sense. This is inconvenient to them, but more importantly, it doesn't make much sense. It brings in more traffic into the neighborhood and creates more movement. Even the mini-section of Park Avenue is right outside my office, is considered part of the residential parking district, and now we won't be able to use it in this deal. So, I would like our council to consider crafting an amendment to the RPP, grant permits to local dentists, and at very least, delay the enforcement during the first pilot year until we can get some resolution involving all stakeholders, everybody. And I ask that we're going to be able to use the Park Avenue, that little mini-street in front of our offices, because as of right now, we won't even be able to use that. And it's just, it's common courtesy, and I think that in general, we should have been consulted, it should have been part of the deal. We should have been in those meetings, and we were not invited. Thank you. Appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stan, whose last name I won't try to pronounce.
Good evening all. I'm a dentist in Palo Alto, Stan. I just wanted to echo some of the comments from my colleague, Tim McKehee, and reiterate here on the record that us, our dental community, we strongly support the RPP program, but as it's set up in Evergreen area, starting April, we won't be able to provide for our staff. And I know that the city never intended for that to happen. A lot of our neighbors are our patients, and we are all one community. All we ask for is for an opportunity to either bring this back on the agenda, not the RPP program itself, but the distribution, the type and quantity of permits, or direct the staff to work with us so that we can make this pilot program a success for everyone involved and set a precedent for years to come. And I hope that you guys can accommodate us on that end. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Liu, to be followed by Tara Sood.
Hello, I'm Melanie Liu, 2003 Edgewood Drive. Native Americans were the original inhabitants of this land. They were the original protectors of this land.
So why don't you pull the mic down just a little bit? Thanks.
Can you start my timer? I'll start over. Melanie Liu, 2003 Edgewood Drive. Native Americans were the original inhabitants of this land. They were the original protectors of the land, the air, the water, and of life yet unborn. After 500 years of resistance against ruthless oppressors of astonishing greed, and as the prophecy of the seventh generation has foretold, at a time when life as we know it is on the brink, members of the Standing Rock Sioux Nation have risen. They have called for an end to business as usual, an end to the Dakota Access Pipeline, an end to the pillaging of Mother Earth. Many people in the Bay Area, including our town of Palo Alto, have heeded this call, people from all workwalks of life. We've had four rallies in Palo Alto. Our last rally on February 11th yielded 600 to 700 people who rallied in front of City Hall and marched to eight banks, asking to defund DAPL and respect Mother Earth. We commend Ash Colra for submitting AB 20 for legislative review to divest cowpers and cowsters from DAPL. We commend Corey Walback for coming out to our rally and speaking in front of City Hall in support of this issue. We commend Palo Alto for having a chief sustainability officer. I spoke with Gil Friend last Friday, and he said it was a good question that I asked of him, which was, where does Palo Alto bank? And he said my reason for asking this question was a just and good reason as well. So after some digging, as a good citizen with acting on behalf of life yet unborn, I found from Tarun Naran that we bank with Wells Fargo and U.S. Bank, and I urge Palo Alto as self-declared leader in environmental issues to walk the talk, to pull our money out of DAPL, out of institutions that bank and fund DAPL, and think locally, think globally, but act locally. Divest, and secondly, adopt a socially responsible banking ordinance post haste.
Thank you. Tara Sood, to be followed by Robert Walmsley.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Tara Sood. I'm an emergency physician. I was at Standing Rock in December 2016. I can assure you, the atrocities that you've probably seen on the media and through social media were only a tip of the iceberg of what was actually occurring at Standing Rock. Most of my time there, I was the only physician at camp, so I was witness to the injuries and the illnesses that were caused there. I took care of the lady who lost her eye to a rubber bullet. I took care of the man who suffered from hypothermia because they stripped him down to his underwear outside in negative 30-degree weather. I cared for injuries and broken bones that were caused by senseless beatings. And I cared for grandmothers who had chemical pneumonitis from tear gas. Sorry, I get emotional because this is very personal to me. I'm not a lawyer. I don't understand the legal definition of human rights violations, but I do know what's happened there is wrong. By investing in banks that fund the Dakota Access Pipeline, we're indirectly participating in these atrocities. We cannot sit around and pretend we don't know what our money is supporting. I urge you to divest from the banks that are funding the Dakota Access Pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Walmsley, to be followed by Kirsten Flynn.
I told people to wave instead of clap. That's why I said that. Hello, my name is Robert Walmsley. I come here to speak to you tonight on what I believe will be considered the defining issue of my generation, climate change. We will have to answer to our children and our grandchildren as to what we did or did not do to avert this crisis. It is now too late to entirely avoid the consequences of what we have wrought, but there is still time to avoid burning down our planet. I come to you tonight to ask for one small step in the long fight to save our planet. Let's say no to the Dakota Access Pipeline and the environmental destruction it enables. I ask for the socially just action of removing our money from the institutions that financially support this project. As we are all aware, we cannot look to Washington for help. We must act in whatever ways are open to us. Money is the one thing these institutions really care about. Let's take it away from them. I ask the City Council, Palo Alto, to divest from all institutions that support DAPL, or in fact, any activity that furthers destruction of our planet. This is the very least we can do to support those who fight courageously for this cause in our name, most of whom are native peoples. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten Flynn, to be followed by Keith Bennett.
Hi there. Thank you for listening to us. I really do appreciate it. Got to get my phone to go on. So I'm here as a Palo Alto citizen, and I live in 471 Matadaro in Ventura. I ask that the council, as my previous speakers have, consider divesting from all banks that offer any kind of financial support for Dakota Access Pipeline or the newly resurrected Keystone Pipeline, which I thought we were finished thinking or talking about. I was raised in Palo Alto. I went to the same elementary and high schools as my kids. I raised three children in Palo Alto, and I actually have 15 family members in Palo Alto. I think of Palo Alto as a good place to raise a family, and I think of it as a city that cares about families. I also think I'm a reasonable person. I usually leave you guys more or less alone to do your jobs, because I think you do a pretty good job. But there are times that I make decisions based entirely on values, and any monies that are spent on fossil fuels are monies that are spent directly against the future of my children, because it is them that will have to reap the effects of global climate change. And so for those reasons, I should have turned it, not to turn off, every dollar is a vote for how you want the world to be. It's one of the only votes that I think sometimes counts, so please spend our city's dollars wisely. Thank you so much, and please consider this action.
Thank you. Keith Bennett, to be followed by Mark Peterson Perez.
On March 7th, council will discuss regulations for construction dewatering. Save Palo Alto's Groundwater has sent two presentations to council, a presentation to the December 14 PSC, and information requested on local versus broad area dewatering prepared by Dan Garber. Dan and I are available to answer questions and provide additional information as requested. Palo Alto residents have been concerned about the impacts of construction dewatering since before 2004. We now have hard factual data, not just hypothetical reports, supporting our previous concerns. The amount of groundwater extracted and dumped in 2006 from the construction of eight basements was enough to irrigate 5,000 average Palo Alto lots for one year. Groundwater levels are significantly lower during dewatering, not only under the applicant's property, but under neighbors' properties hundreds of feet away. Local area dewatering using secant or cutoff walls is a proven locally-used practice for underground construction in areas of high groundwater. However, we should also carefully analyze the cumulative effects of basements and cutoff walls to ensure that they don't permanently impede groundwater flows and reduce stormwater management capabilities. The enhancements of staff's proposed 2017 program mainly correct obvious deficiencies in the current program. We request that all new regulations apply to all projects from onwards without grandfathering and without exceptions. Community groundwater can no longer be treated as construction waste. We also ask indirect staff to propose policies for 2018 onward that achieve zero waste of groundwater without increasing flood risks. This goal can be achieved by working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Peterson Perez, to be followed by Rita Varell.
Mr. Mayor, before you start the clock, I need to hook up the...
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Wait. Let us know when you've got it.
I think we all know who this person is. It's one of the reasons why Palo Alto Free Press went dark. He filed a federal complaint indicating that we copyrighted this photo, so I'm in the middle of a legal battle with GoDaddy and other entities and concerns, so that's for the general public, if you want to know this is the reason why he claims to be a First Amendment advocate, but obviously, that's not true. I just wanted to share just a couple of things with you. I'm getting set to go off on an expedition again. This is one of my vehicles. This is on the island of Isla de Omotepe in Nicaragua. I'm a citizen of Nicaragua. I live in a, speaking of groundwater, I live in Tiquantepe, which is, we're sitting on, we're sitting on one of the largest aquifers in all of Central America, and believe me, the water is quite tasty. So I'm set to take off on expedition again. I'll be driving my vehicle to Panama. I'll be putting my vehicle on a barco, and then I'll be traveling on to Caracas, Venezuela, and beyond. I've made the trip to Panama, round trip seven times in various vehicles, and it's quite a journey, and I'd like to dispel the myth about driving through Mexico. I've traversed all of Mexico, all of Baja California, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Belize. I've just been in just about every country in this side. Now Nicaragua is the second poorest nation in the Western Hemisphere, next to Haiti, so there's a lot of poverty there. But I'll tell you this, that my total expenses, monthly expenses, is less than $400 a month. So my investments there, my rate of return is generally, has been about 10% for the past 20 years. So it's an incredible return on my investment. I would encourage anybody to visit Nicaragua. It's a warm, friendly, embracing place. But before I go, I'd like to tell the person that's covering for Jim Keen, you've done a fantastic job pitching in for him. And I spoke to Jim on the streets of Palo Alto the other day, and he's recovering, but thanks again for all the tremendous effort that you have put forth.
Thank you.
Okay, Rita Varell. I'd like to invite the public to the special City Council meeting on March 7th, Tuesday, at 6 o'clock, when the important issue of the 2017 and 18 regulations for dewatering during residential basement construction will be discussed and voted on by the City Council. This will probably be the culmination of SavePaloAlto's groundwater.org, probably about a year and a half of work. In February of 2016, we were asked to present alternative methods of construction which would decrease groundwater extraction, and we did that. We've worked with Public Works to formulate reasonable regulations. Some of those were taken out. I'm hoping that the City Council will settle this issue once and for all by simply regulating that no extracted groundwater can be put into the storm drains either in 2017 or 2018. This would protect property owners' rights. They could build their basement. They just had to figure out what to do with the groundwater. They can use alternative ground, construction techniques. They can percolate it back onto their own land. They can have some of it trucked away for use by others, or they can have the neighbors use the water. And they can schedule construction so that minimal delays occur, which also will protect the groundwater. This is the community's groundwater, and as Keith said, in 2016, eight projects dumped 140 million gallons of groundwater, extracting groundwater compact soils and sets us up for floods. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Shadowing, followed by Mayron Fodovajah.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Shadowing, and I wanted to make mention of the residential parking permit program. I live in Evergreen Park, and I work in downtown Palo Alto. And I just want to be honest, I've never really had a problem finding a place to park in Evergreen Park, but I do have some concerns with some of our local doctors' offices and them being able to find places for their patients and also for some of their workers. Some of my colleagues that I work with currently have access to residential parking in downtown Palo Alto, which I think works fairly well. A couple of concerns with it going to lower-income folks and not being, you know, even across the board, but I think that's another topic. I just, I really hope that you guys would take that into consideration for some of these folks. Second one I wanted to mention, I don't think that El Camino is in kind of the guidelines for the RPP program, and I do, on a very constant basis, see a lot of campers and mobile homes parked on El Camino, which I think tarnished Palo Alto a touch, but just wanted to make mention of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayron, to be followed by Christopher Bedford.
Good evening, council members. Mayor. My name is Mayron Fodovajah, and I'm a dentist who practices as dentistry on 1805 El Camino, which basically falls into Evergreen District. I understand the RPP for our district was voted on last month, but we also feel that we never had a chance to really investigate and measure the impact that this imposed on our practice. We were informed that there are 250 permits that were issued to the employers in our district. However, my understanding is that all those permits have been sold, and now there's just a long waiting list. My building gives us four parking spaces, and I have five employees, including myself. All of my employees, they travel long distance. Two of them actually live in the East Bay, and... Two of them actually live in the East Bay, and we decided to basically try to try different things. One of the things is to park on the structure, the parking structure on California, and it takes them about a good 15 to 20 minutes on top of their long commute to get to our building. Even parking on El Camino is becoming more challenging. If you try to park after 7:30 a.m., those parking spaces are all filled, and it seems like all of those filled by either the employees from Stanford or their students. This is a major problem. We understand the concern that Palo Alto residents have, and we're not against RPP. We just want a better solution that meets everybody. It appears that the council members will be voting on RPP for the downtown area next Monday, and we feel that all this district are tied together. We're requesting to put the RPP for the Evergreen District back on the agenda, so we also can express our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Bedford, to be followed by Eric Wu.
Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Chris Bedford, and I'm not a resident of Palo Alto. I work in Palo Alto, and I like Palo Alto a lot. So I'm here to kind of second the other speakers who were talking about divesting, your city's divestment, hopeful divestment from anything associated with the Dakota Access Pipeline. And I'd like to add to that, you know, I really hope that you guys consider divesting from any financial institution that's investing in any kind of pipeline. And the reason I am urging you to do that is, well, I mean, I agree with the other speakers. They made some really good points, especially the Dakota Access Pipeline. It's really desecrating a lot of ancestral burial grounds of Native Americans, and I really think that after 500 years, those folks have really suffered enough. There's like a moral argument to it, and there's also like, I think, a really practical business argument to divestment, aside from the fact that, you know, climate change and, you know, we're all at risk of, you know, having our planet burned to a crisp and seeing droughts and floods. Okay, there's that. But, you know, does an oil-based economy really make economic sense? From what I've read, we subsidize the oil and gas fossil fuel industry, you know, we subsidize them $4 billion. There was an article in New York Times recently, the title of which was, "Should We Really Be Subsidizing the Fossil Fuel Industry to the Tune of $4 Billion a Year?" I've also seen estimates of $10 billion. I don't know what the exact figure is, but I do know that most of those estimates don't even begin to take into account the amount of money we spend on military adventures in the Middle East to protect, you know, our access to these oil supply lines, and the blowback that we get from being in these countries from terrorists who don't want us there. So this whole, you know, bet on an oil-based economy just, to me, makes no sense at all, and, you know, we shouldn't be subsidizing companies that are continuing to make that bet. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Eric Wu, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Eric Wu, orthodontist in Evergreen Park. Realized the RPP in Evergreen Park isn't scheduled until the March 6 meeting, but I wanted to add a few thoughts this evening. First of all, I'd like to say our office, our staff members, our patients support the RPP program in Evergreen Park 100%. We understand the importance of decreasing the number of single-occupant vehicles and non-resident parking. In fact, we were the first orthodontic office years ago to be certified as a Bay Area Green Business by the County of Santa Clara and continue to do so voluntarily. However, with the current structure of the RPP program in Evergreen Park proposed, I am very concerned with the inability of myself to purchase parking permits for my eight full-time, highly-skilled employees who serve the residents of the greater Palo Alto community. In a week's time, council is set to hear from many of my other dental colleagues throughout the city of Palo Alto on March 6. I can tell you, the dental community has been working very closely with neighborhood leaders over the course of the last few weeks, and we've made great strides in our progress. I do respectfully request council to consider amending the RPP for Evergreen Park to prioritize and allow neighborhoods serving businesses, such as healthcare providers, such as dentists, to purchase parking permits for their employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by Nielsen Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor Sharf and council members. Thank... The... There's a trilogy that keeps going around and around in this council and back to the newspapers and back to the public and back to the council. It's the housing, the transportation, and the industry, and the money, the taxes to pay for it all. When Mrs. Stanford got together with her friends and developed the city of Palo Alto, like the medium is the message, the town was the comprehensive plan. They said, "We're going to have houses here, nice houses, and we're going to have some stores here, and some doctors, and some dentists, and we're going to have all these things in this town." And nearly 100 years later, after the Second World War, and people had a sort of a different way of looking at life, they decided that we needed something more. We need a lot of money, and it would be good to have industry up on the Stanford lands instead of houses, because it brings in money, whereas houses don't bring in money. And they never stopped to think that it brings in also traffic, because if you put the industry here and the workers have to live over yonder, they're going to have to get back and forth somehow, and that means cars, and that means bad air quality. And so we've been looking at that. And I think two things about that, because you're studying Stanford tonight. I'd like to ask you, please, please, do not let Stanford tear down Escondido Village. Councilmember Holman talked about embedded energy a few times ago, and it's really very wasteful to take houses that are useful and not too, too spread out and throw them away, especially when Stanford has thousands, literally thousands, of acres to put their new housing on. Please. Thank you very much.
Nielsen Buchanan, to be followed by Reza Rihaie.
Thank you, council. I'm here to say a couple of things about the launch of the Evergreen Park Permit Program. I'm not sure why I get roped into some of these tangential things, but apparently I'm the longest and oldest surviving resident person with the permit parking program, so I hope I'm not, but that's what I was told. Let me just reflect on the launch of the downtown permit parking program. The program was a pretty safe start, because we started with an outrageous 2,000 limits on sales. There was just no way you were ever going to have to worry about not having enough permits to distribute to people who were interested in, and indeed, that's what happened. A couple of risks with the launch here. One is got a whole lot of people a little bit nervous about getting started. That's normal. I keep telling people to keep your eye on the ball. What you really want to think about is mid to late May, when the thing is stabilized, they're starting to give tickets, parking patterns settle down, and we'll know whether we've got stability. The question is, between now and then, will be enough permits to serve the businesses downtown? That was one of the tenets of the downtown parking program. We're not going to disadvantage anybody who's currently employed. We weren't going to be business disruptive. I'm pretty sure staff has got the right number, that that'd be a safe number to get started. What I object to, and I think is dangerous, is the prioritization. There's a three-step prioritization, and I think some people might get on the first priorities that really don't deserve it. What happens if you're selling permits to a business that is non-conforming? By having strata, you actually could have mal-distribution. I think it'd be a better launch to have a free-for-all and not have the priorities that the staff has recommended. Thank you.
Reza Rihaie.
Good evening, council members. I've been coming here for some time also, not as long as Nielsen, obviously, but I've brought my son tonight in case this takes longer. He'll take over after me. I'm here to talk about the RPP ordinance in Evergreen Park. I've met with several of you in the past, in the past few weeks. We've been working with the resident members as well, the leaders. The ordinance, as it's going through, it was put together without any input from the business community, particularly the healthcare providers. And come April 1st, none of the dental practices there are going to have any parking for their staff. So it's caused, obviously, a great deal of concern for my colleagues over there. And this comes at a time where it's really difficult to get any staff to stay with us. And we've had, we have very qualified staff that we spend years training, and because of the length of commute that they have to go through, it's become very difficult. If you, in fact, talk to most of the practices, they have opening positions, open positions that they haven't been able to fill for months. These are, you know, just to remind you, these are community-serving businesses that we've pretty much come to agreement that are necessary for the residents of Palo Alto. And when you look at the numbers that came out of our last year's survey, we have, any office has somewhere between 70% to 90% of their patients coming from Palo Alto residents themselves. So we're asking that if council can meet together and bring back the Evergreen Park area RPP and put it on the agenda for next week, because we have some solutions, working with the resident leaders, that might help them as well, so these businesses aren't hurt in April. Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes our comment. Now we need a minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes. All right. Foot on the board? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka absent. Now we come to the consent calendar. I see Councilmember Koo's light on. Councilmember Koo?
So I did send a note to our assistant city manager to ask to have Agenda Item 8 pulled from the consent calendar. And may I say why? Or how does that work?
No, you just ask to pull it. You don't say anything further, and then you need to get two council members. Second. All right, so you have the, so the motion, so the item is pulled from consent and will be rescheduled to a date uncertain.
Thank you.
Fair enough? All right. Now, if there's nothing further on the consent calendar, we need a motion to approve. Move to approve. All right, that's Councilmember Du Bois moving to approve, and Councilmember Niss seconding. If we could vote on the board? Yes. Oh, we do? I did not notice that. Forget the vote. All right, that's right. You guys need to give me the speaker's... Play there. I know. I got confused. All right, so Herb Barak on the consent calendar.
Who else do you have on consent?
Oh, it's pulled. You don't really want to speak then? Kim Atkinson, do you want to speak on number eight? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Kim Atkinson. I'm a lifelong resident and homeowner in Palo Alto. I raised my children here and went to the same schools they did. Tonight, I wanted to speak to you about Item 8 regarding the property above Arastudero Open Space Preserve at 670 Los Trancos. I'm glad it has been removed, because I was here to request that from the consent calendar. So that's terrific. Thank you. So that the public can hear a discussion about this issue. The proposed, this proposed development does not meet requirements for our open space. As I understand it, from the Palo Alto Municipal Code Open Space Review Criteria, the proposed development at 670 Los Trancos is unlawful for several reasons. Number one, the main building is in clear sight of the open space preserve. Palo Alto's open space criteria says that any development should not be visually intrusive from public roadways or public parklands. I brought some photographs with me. They're not prepared for the screen that I took when hiking in Arastudera last December. The proposed property was flagged and marked and quite visible from the trail I was on at Acorn and Metal Arc intersection at the top of the hill. The second problem with this development is that it should be located away from hilltops and designed to not extend above the nearest ridge line, and this is in the review criteria. I have photos showing that this is highly visible from the park. I'm also deeply concerned about the secondary dwelling that is proposed for this property, which has been inaccurately labeled as an accessory building. It is surely not an accessory building with two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a kitchen, dining room, and living room at 1,600 square feet. I'll just conclude by saying that for many reasons, this proposed development is unfair to the public, impedes on our open space, and seems to me to be unlawful. Thank you.
Bill Ross, do you still want to speak on Item 9? I think he left. All right. And then we have Ilya Mushovich. Do you want to speak on Item 9? That's been continued to March 6. I think she must have left as well. All right, now we can vote on the board. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka absent. All right, and now we move on to our Item Number 10, public hearing on adoption of an ordinance amending Palo Alto Municipal Code. Does staff have a presentation?
Good evening. Claire Campbell, Senior Planner. So as a quick reminder, you were provided with an app places memo for this discussion tonight, and that memo highlights some text changes that we're proposing for the draft ordinance, and also included an attachment for the housing inventory sites discussion that we're going to have later. So tonight, staff is bringing forward a collection of code amendments that we consider to be, for the most part, relatively non-controversial. And these proposed amendments are focused on implementing the city's housing ordinance, housing element, modifying code provisions to reflect current practices and policies, correct text errors, and to introduce new policies relative to affordable housing and the transportation management plans. So staff has brought these proposed amendments to the Planning and Transportation Commission twice in the fall of last year for direction and comments on the amendments, and the topics that received the most discussion were changes to the loading requirements, and the mechanical parking lifts, and the housing inventory sites, small lot consolidations. At their December meeting, the PTC unanimously recommended approval of the proposed ordinance. So I'm going to briefly walk through the proposed changes that are detailed in the staff report. The First Amendment is to update two housing-related definitions, and this is for consistency with our housing element. These two terms, transitional housing and supportive housing, are being modified to remove the reference to multifamily use and instead use a broader reference of residential use. And the ordinance outlines the specific language for these two definitions. The next set of changes are related to off-street loading requirements. The first one is to correct errors in the loading requirements table for a few specific land uses. Back in 1992, when we had a code update, there was some information that got lost when the formatting was changed, so we're correcting that now. The second item is to clarify the application of loading requirements for mixed-use projects. And this is where each land use will be evaluated specifically for the loading requirements for the whole project. And the last one is to allow director's approval for off-street loading adjustments on a case-by-case basis, and if the circumstances warrant that. And we've included, as an attachment, some examples, some project examples, that show you some loading adjustments that were supportive for some projects, and that's in Attachment D of the CMR. That's right. Okay. So in recent years, parking lifts are being more often proposed with the technology becoming more available and more accepted. Attachment E of the staff report provides a list of projects going back to 2006 where we... we have lifts or other mechanical devices that were used for these projects, and we have approved them. So these projects are mostly mixed-use projects, and we do have one project that was an office project approved in 2015. The proposed language specifically allows lifts in association with specific uses, and those uses are multifamily, office, hotel, automotive, industrial, or institutional uses. And we've also included some other guidelines for design standards and for some logistical requirements that need to be met in order to support the use of mechanical lifts in a project. So for the next item, I need to refer to the App Places memo. The language in this memo is to replace the text in Section 3 of the draft ordinance, and that's Attachment A of the CMR. So the current code has a provision that requires projects subject to architectural review to be approved first before any demolition can be allowed. So we want to expand this to require all discretionary approvals to be completed prior to issuing a demolition permit. We're also clarifying that, except for deconstruction projects, no demolition is allowed for single-family homes or duplexes in residential districts unless the building permit plans have been approved for the replacement project. And the next one is the deferral of the director's decision. So on a case-by-case application, projects with multiple entitlements, where one is required to have council action, these can be packaged together and forwarded to City Council for review and action. And this allows the council to consider all of the project components together when making a decision for a project. Additionally, we've added provisions to give the director some latitude to forward other projects to council if deemed appropriate. And this is also an existing practice that we just need to codify. So again, for the App Places memo, there was an attachment to that that provided some additional parcel information for the specific lots identified as small lot consolidation opportunities. And this is related to what we're talking about now. So the new language is to comply with the Housing Element Program H2.1.9, where the city is to provide incentives to encourage consolidation of small housing inventory sites to develop affordable housing. So we have 27 parcels currently identified as these consolidation opportunity parcels. 21 of them are located in the RT35 Zone District, and we have two in the CD, and we have four in the CS Zone. And these are shown on Attachment F. There's a map provided for you that shows these parcels. So in the ordinance language, staff has outlined a number of development requirements in order to qualify for the proposed incentives. So two examples, just to share with you, is that for a mixed-use project, for example, it's an 85% requirement that the floor area must be devoted to the residential component of the project. A second example is that the affordable units must be deed restricted for 30-year minimum. The incentives proposed to comply with our housing element include reducing guest parking by 30%, eliminating parking for residential units that are 500 square feet or less, streamlining the planning review process for the design review and for the subdivision, and waiving the planning entitlement fees. All right. The next one is, the next amendment is related to when a transportation demand management plan is required for a project. So in consultation with our chief transportation official, we've developed these thresholds for a TDM plan. So the first one is for when a project generates 100 or more new peak weekend or weekday trips. So that would require a TDM program, or yes, plan. And secondly, if the applicant is requesting a parking reduction or needs to support some lower trip generation figures, we also need a TDM plan to review and verify and confirm that information. So in addition, we've also modified the language for monitoring requirements to be every three years instead of once every five years, or once after the first five years. So that's a new one. And then to add possible penalties for a TDM noncompliance. So the last one, we are proposing two amendments to the automobile dealership overlay. And the first one is to exempt floor area used for customer vehicle queuing for service drop-off from the floor area ratio calculations. And the second one is to exempt floor area used for required parking related to service areas from the floor area ratio calculations. All right. So for next steps, so upon the City Council's recommendation of adoption of this draft ordinance, we need to come back for a second reading, and we have that tentatively scheduled for March 20th. And then following the second reading, it will take 31 days for the new ordinance to take effect. Yes?
And Mayor, I'll just let you know that Commissioner Eric Rosenbloom is also in the audience and can offer a few comments from the PTC's perspective.
Welcome, Commissioner Eric Rosenbloom.
So I won the contest to get to represent us tonight, so thanks for giving me a few minutes. Just to give you some additional context from our discussion, so I think that we had multiple sessions covering this item, and so we had gone through bit by bit, because there are many items that are represented here. In the end, mostly the PTC accepted staff recommendations as presented to you. So no demolition till replacement project approval, deferred director's decision, loading zone discussion, and the Automobile Combined District were all items that we felt staff recommendation was well thought through and generally passed through after several discussions in the form that you see right now. There was more discussion around the TDM plan requirements. We focus on the narrow issue of when to trigger a TDM plan, and the 100-trip net generation during peak times seemed like a logical trigger, and when parking relief is requested, that that would trigger the need for TDM plan to accompany the project plan. The item that, the two items that had the most discussion were around mechanical lifts, where it was felt that the staff definition was overly narrow, that there are additional uses that should be considered for mechanical lifts, including auto dealerships, hotels, et cetera. There was discussion about whether or not it's appropriate to have a mechanical lift for residential guest parking, and the commission was split. The majority was four allowing this, but it was three to two, so it was close. And there was also a split around the standard for which mechanical lifts are designed, meaning should they be designed as if all maximum-sized cars could be accommodated, or could they be designed for smaller cars? And the majority voted for that it could be designed for smaller cars as necessary. Finally, the housing element, small lot consolidation, had some discussion, and the consensus was finally that the staff recommendation is correct, that it is aligned with our comp plan to try to consolidate smaller lots to facilitate development, in particular of affordable housing. So those are the items that had more discussion than others, just to highlight the things that we felt were noteworthy. Jonathan, anything that I've missed? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to confirm with the city clerk, we have no public speakers. All right. Then we will move to council, and I need, I guess, I need to open the public hearing. And if there are no public speakers, I can then close the public hearing, which I will do. And now we will return to council for, why don't we have a round of questions and comments if people want them? Councilmember Phil Seth.
Question on how we're going to proceed through these. There's a whole bunch of stuff here that's not all related to itself. I mean, do we want to proceed with questions and comments one at a time, or do the whole bucket? Or how do you want?
So why don't we do the whole bucket?
Okay.
I think it's more efficient. We can then see how it comes with motions, and if people really want to split the motion, I'd be open to something like that.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions then. On the off-street loading, to, so the proposal is to allow the director to waive that. What is the current process to get a waiver now? Does that have to come to council, or how does that work?
So the current process now, it goes through the discretionary review process, and I think we don't have a formal process of saying you need to apply for an exemption, but the project is evaluated, and based on the conditions, we would make a determination whether or not it seems appropriate for that use. So I know for mixed uses we've allowed, or we followed, there's a line in our loading zone where it says other uses, and we can, that'll be how the director would determine what's appropriate.
So how is that different from what's being proposed now?
So if I can.
If you look at Item C, Director Approval to Waive the Loading Zone Requirements.
Right. So there's, so two things. One is, starting on packet page 325 of the ordinance, you've got a list of when the parking adjustments can be made.
Yep.
And for loading zones, we don't have a standard for modification for loading zones today. So what we've been using is this other uses category. We've gotten some concern from the community, from council, that applying the mixed-use projects, which is typically where we saw that waiver, that that wasn't, you know, the thought was we should be using the requirements for each use in the mixed-use project instead of coming up with our own standard, which is basically what we've done. And so we've just applied this, we've looked at the code section in a liberal manner. Now what we're trying to do is codify a practice by which the director does have that authority to do it.
So you're saying the director has the authority to do it now, but the mechanism is to classify something as other uses?
I guess what I'm saying is the code is not specifically clear about giving the director the authority to waive loading zones. We've done it, but there's no provision in the code that explicitly states that. And so what we're trying to do through a variety of these amendments is to align practice with code, because, as you know, there's been a lot of conversation about, you know, the plain reading of the code.
So if I understand what you said, right, because I'm sort of asking, what's the default if we don't approve this, and your answer is there is no default?
The default would be, yes, ambiguity, but also, you know, a variance, which is not necessarily the standard that one might want to apply to a loading zone issue.
Ah, it would require a variance.
Right. Because what we're talking about here is, you know, in part, urban design concepts. And I think we mentioned in the staff report, the space dimensions for a loading zone, that can have a significant effect on how one designs a building on a site. And so there may not be any physical constraint with a property, which is the standard for a variance, but there may be some other city objectives where we'd want to allow for that waiver. If there's other loading zones nearby, if there's an alley, or some other convenient use, or even just modifying the dimensions so there's not such a demand, or such a space constraint.
Got it. Are we doing comments or just questions?
You can do comments as well.
Well, I mean, the reason I ask is, I mean, the reason to have a loading zone code is so that trucks don't block up the street while they're unloading and loading, right? And, you know, so we're sort of talking about, well, what's the process by which we grant an exemption from that, right? But you can look at it the other way, which is, well, you know, maybe the applicant needs to build a project which isn't too big for its loading zone capacity, right? And so the process for deciding those things, right, seems like the burden ought to be on the applicant, right? So, I mean, because, I mean, if we don't have this in codes, then everything's discretionary, and that means it's sort of done by.
I'm sorry, you hear that last part?
Sorry. I mean, the, I mean, we're sort of, I mean, we're sort of making this discretionary, but what you've said is it's already discretionary, right?
Well, we're making it, we're stipulating a process that does not clearly exist in the code today.
Other than you got to have a waiver.
Other than you get a variance, or we liberally apply different sections of the code, as we've done in the past. And also note that this code section came into place at a time where I think the trucks used for delivery were larger than are typically used today. We have smaller trucks, a lot of, you know, small vans and things like that. So the dimension, I just want to get the dimension out on the record, what was that?
Okay. So I had another question, on the mechanical lift issue?
Yes.
So in general, I mean, if somebody wants to put a mechanical lift in, right, then they just want to put in a mechanical lift, then I think that's sort of one way we look at it. If the mechanical lift is being used to satisfy a code requirement, okay, then what if, what if it's in disrepair? So what if it breaks, right? Right? Then in principle, the owner's in violation of city codes, right? So what's the city recourse if that happens?
Okay. So again, this is another one of these things where we've had projects reviewed and approved, even by council, for mechanical lifts. And here's another area where the code is ambiguous with respect to its application. So what we're, the intent of what we're trying to do is not have it be this guessing game for staff, or the community, or for developers. They want to have some expectation as to whether lifts are allowed or not allowed. And so we're trying to put a parameter around that. And it's on packet page 328, we, it actually begins on 327, but 328 has the types of things that we would require of an applicant who is seeking to use mechanical lifts. None of this stuff is anything that we really ask for today. Today, somebody proposes a mechanical lift, we accept that it's going to work in some, you know, logical way. But here, we're actually, now we're asking for, and I'll look to letter D on page 328, we're asking for some very detailed analysis and reporting about how these systems will operate, not only on a day-to-day basis, but in the event that there's emergency maintenance, what's the schedule for that, what's the backup systems? And so, you know, I think we're being much more with this ordinance. I think we're trying to capture those kinds of concerns.
Okay. Understand. Good. By the way, I noticed on here, because it, on, since we're on that page, line F says it will, it is supposed to accommodate full-size SUVs, and I thought you just said the opposite.
No, it's staff's recommendation, and the PTC landed on a full-size sport utility fitting within the space.
Okay.
That was a discussion point at the commission meeting, though, for sure.
Okay. Good. I thought that makes sense. I mean, if we're going to use these things, and they're going to be acceptable to meeting code requirements, then there's a lot of SUVs out there. Okay. On the small lot consolidation, I had a question, so we want to provide incentives for 100% for portable housing. Great, makes sense. But some of them are parking-related. And what's the justification for removing the parking requirements? I mean, I think, I mean, we have no shortage of people contending for the street parking spaces in SOFA right now, right? So is there a rationale why we think there's going to be less demand for those?
So I think the reasoning behind it is we're trying to find an incentive, so, and that's one of the big things of trying to find something. And I think because they're smaller units, we've also kind of looked at the ADU situation too, where the small units, like if it's attached to the home, it only required one parking space. So we were thinking, what are some, what are some ideas that we can be creative with that could be an incentive for development that could create these housing units? So parking is the hot topic. So if we can reduce that, alleviate that burden, then maybe there's a way that it might make something happen.
Okay. So the genesis of this is it's an incentive, and it's something that people would like, as opposed to there's a reason for thinking there's going to be less cars? Yeah, okay.
For these types of uses, I think they generally don't have as many parking, they don't generate as much parking demand for affordable housing projects.
Okay. Okay, that was it for me. Thanks.
I see no other councilmember having questions. Oh, Councilmember DuBois. Now the board lights up. All right. Councilmember DuBois.
First of all, thank you for the staff report and everything. It's very clear. I just wondered, is this the annual code cleanup, or will there be an additional session?
Yeah. I mean, that's the concept here, is that we sort of have parsed a few out, but this is, would be the third one that we started in sort of like a two-year timeframe, and we plan on doing another one by the end of the year. But yeah, that's the concept.
Okay. So I remember there were a bunch of items on past cleanup lists that were left on the list, and I have to admit, I lost track of what we've done and what was still on that list. But there were, there were other items, I think, that were interesting, so I don't know if those are future work. I think some of those were seismic bonuses. I think some of those were seismic bonuses. Is that still, do we fix that already, or? I think we were talking about making it a requirement rather than offering additional incentives for seismic upgrades.
So, the, the council will be considering information item, or a, a report soon about the city's efforts to upgrade its seismic ordinance, which I think is in somewhat related to incentives that we might offer. I, I don't have that list that you're referring to, but I do know of the list. And, and there were a lot of items on there, and I think when we first started this process, we were really ambitious about what we were going to be able to accomplish, and what we thought was controversial or not controversial. Turns out, the things that we thought were not very controversial were more controversial than we anticipated.
I mean, there were a few that I thought we were pretty close on. I think it'd be useful to attach that list in, in future versions, kind of what's the work plan coming up.
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah, I have a couple others I just wanted to check on real quick. The idea of conversion of building use triggering parking assessment, is that something we've done already, or is that still on the list?
Councilmember DuBois, do you, it's not really on topic. I mean, do you want to take it off?
I mean, well, this is the annual-
Get lists from them later?
This is the annual code cleanup, I just, on this section 18, and there were a bunch of things from the past that, I'm just curious where they are.
Yeah. So I, just briefly, I can speak to that. I mean, there's, there was, there was a large attachment of items that we had from staff, from, you know, conversations that we had with developers, from community members, even some comments that we've heard from council. And we just pushed everything on this list. But this, what the intent here with this program is, we're really trying to address this disconnect that we were experiencing, where folks thought, you know, the staff's interpretation of the code was liberal, there were some outmoded references, things weren't aligning. And so, this has been a, a sort of a staff-driven effort to make changes to the code, to help improve administration, so it can minimize some of the frustration, as opposed to a, a council-endorsed list of things that we were necessarily going to be knocking down over a specific period of time. But there are important things on that list that we need to revisit, but we wanted to take it away from a prioritization of, of those amendments, and focus more on the things that we need to do to help projects get reviewed, you know, in a more efficient manner.
Okay. So just, just a quick comment, three or four of them that I hope will come back soon. We had a discussion about assumptions about square footage per employee for parking requirements, office use definitions. I think office use is part of the state density bonus law, and, and rooftop uses are a few that I remember. So on these ones specifically, I guess one, one quick question I have is, why did we change the definition of transition supportive housing? Looks like we basically struck multifamily from the definition.
So this was required, this is a state regulation that was required for the city to comply with, and we've also committed to doing it within our housing element. So we were supposed to get this done, I think, by last year, to get that completed, to update the definitions to comply with our housing element.
Okay. And just so I understand, the impact of that is that this kind of housing would be allowed in any residential zone?
Yes.
Okay. I did think on the loading zone question, it seemed to be written to suggest impacts on the project, but not necessarily on maybe level of service of the streets. And, so I wondered if that was the ten, or if there was any idea that we would balance kind of the impact of a street-based loading zone, like what impact that would have on traffic?
So the standard that we're using is on packet page 327, and it says that the director may modify the quantity or dimension of off-street loading, and this is only one space of off-street loading, for non-residential development, based on existing proposed site conditions, availability of alternative means to address loading and unloading activities, and upon a finding that the off-street loading may conflict with comprehensive plan goals and policies related to site planning, circulation, and access, and urban design principles. So I think it's that last clause of the sentence that is that hook to make sure that if we are granting off-street loading, that we're doing it in a way that does not conflict with circulation objectives of the, of the general, of the comp plan, as well as some of the other urban design criteria.
Yeah, I guess it's that last part. I guess it would be upon finding that off-street or, or on-street loading would conflict with the comp plan.
Right. So if it conflicts, we would not grant it. We would not grant the, the waiver.
Okay. Just, I guess it sounds like you're only looking at the off-street versus the impact of the on-street loading zone.
Well, I guess it's, well, I, I think it's looking at it holistically. We're, we're, we don't want to waive parking if it's going to end up creating an obstruction on the roadway. I mean, that would be cause for saying no.
Right. Okay. On the consolidation of small lots, yeah, absolutely support creation of 100% affordable housing. Thank you for the handout. I think it clarified a question I had, that basically, all the housing sites would now be zoned RT35. And it looks like a lot of them already are, but some of them were commercial, commercially zoned?
So just to clarify, the zoning wouldn't change at all, it's just that the development standards for when a project would come forward would be, would use the RT35 development standards?
Yeah. So if it was zoned CS, it would be effectively RT35.
The 4CS, yeah.
And is that, is this ordinance restricted just to this list, or as we update our housing inventory, would this automatically change?
Yes, I, I would think that we would do that. I'm not sure that's going to be a little bit of time before we're updating our list, though.
Yeah, it's, it's a little tricky, because it's potentially changing zoning on future properties, but-
Yeah.
So that, that, it does indicate, it seems to suggest the housing elements inventory sites list is the reference. So I would say, yes, if we did update that in the future, this provision would apply. So maybe one thing that we can do is specify the, the review period that we're in now, add the dates to the one for the current housing element, which takes us to, I'm blanking on the date, 2022? 2022. So we can include that reference, so that we're clear as to which housing element we're referring to, and then we can modify that as needed, if, if you feel like that's a concern that we need to address.
Yeah. Okay. I think that would be good, actually. And then, the size, I mean, what, what do people generally consider a microunit?
We, we don't have a, a term for that in our code, and, and I think it probably may vary by jurisdiction or who you ask on that, but, you know, small units that I've seen in, in other jurisdictions that I've worked for, I've seen them as, as low as 375 and upwards of, you know, 700 for, you know, to be considered small or microunits.
Okay. I mean, 700 doesn't sound micro, yeah.
And I think, but I think that's why it depends by jurisdiction. In fact, since I was here, I've heard people talking about square footages even less than 300. So I, I think it really depends on, on what you're using as your reference point.
On the TDM requirements, the 100 net trips, is that per week, per day?
That's during the peak period of time. That's, so that's within, if, within the peak hours. So it's in a one, in one day, one peak period of time.
So would it be 50 in the morning and 50 at night?
I think it's during the peak hour for, so if, if the peak hour is from 4:00 to 6:00 in the evening, that's the 100 trips that we're looking at.
Yeah. I mean, so how often do we see projects that have that many new trips? Seems like a big number.
Lately, we haven't seen too many of that size, but it's not just limited to the 100 trips, which is consistent with the VTA standard for when we require traffic impact analysis. We're also suggesting that a T, T, TDM?
TDM.
Be required when there's a request for a parking reduction, and that we do see from time to time. The, the interest here is, is, one, the code is set up now where an applicant may request this, and what we want to say is, we want you, we are going to require it if you meet the standard or the standard. And then there's also this other, for any projects that are requesting a reduction, or claiming a reduction due to the proximity to transit. So we're being, just being more explicit about it.
So, how did, how did the 100 come about? It seems, seems very high.
Right. So this is the same reference that, when the city has a project that we're reviewing for a, a development proposal application, VTA has a standard that when 100 or more trips are being generated during weekday or weekend peak periods, that we need to perform a traffic impact analysis. And that's this robust analysis about intersection impact segments and so forth. We're just using that same standard that we would use for a large, for a large project that has the potential to, to create these impacts, that would require study, to also then require, not voluntarily provide, but to require a TDM for those types of projects. So if you trip that threshold to need, to require a TIA, then we're also going to require the TDM plan.
Okay. And then I did see you had some enforcement clauses in there, but I guess the, the penalty will be determined later?
Right. Right. We're not trying to establish any penalties at this point. We have a separate fee schedule that the council adopts yearly about administrative fees if there's a violation of, of those standards.
I mean, I was concerned that the, the reporting period is three years, so it's first one at two years, and then we wouldn't really see it again until year five. Was there much discussion about how frequently they should report compliance with a TDM?
I, you know, I don't know what the typical standard is on that. I think for, I'm just recalling a project that I looked at, a PC around, not too far from here, where it's the same kind of concept, where it was two years, and then it was, I think it was every two to three years thereafter as needed to demonstrate compliance. But I don't know that there is a, a hard and fast rule on that. And I think it's also-
Is it in the code, or is it in the guidelines?
For, is that three years?
Yeah. Okay. So that's, what page? 11?
Okay. Yeah. So I mean, I think there's some, obviously there's council discussion if you wanted to make an adjustment on that. I would suggest, though, that, you know, there does take, there, there is some time between implementation of the TDM and getting some actual results. So I, I think there's a reason why it's not annually.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll be interested in what my colleagues think. I mean, I think two years until the first report makes sense to come up to speed, but I would be interested in more frequent reporting on a TDM, perhaps annually after the first two years. Mechanical lifts, it seems like you guys struck a good balance, and just to clarify that, they would be really focused more on long-term parking, not short-term? Like, it wouldn't be used for retail, park for half an hour?
That's correct, yes.
Great. I think those are my questions or comments. Thanks.
Councilmember Walbach.
So, kind of picking up on a thread that Councilmember DuBois was hitting on, which is, you're looking at this in the context of other code changes, other, you know, code cleanups, modifications, and what's in the work plan right now. There were a couple of things I was looking for that I didn't see here, and I'm not shocked that they're not here, but I was wondering if they're planning, if your, if staff is planning to bring them back in the future, or planning to bring things, these, the ones I'm about to identify in the future, or if further council direction, such as through a colleague's memo, would be appropriate to make sure they're included next time we're talking about code changes? And so the items that I'm thinking about are, one would be having a, a process by which residential projects can participate in parking assessment districts, either for sharing with, with current spaces, especially at night, if they're, if the garages are empty at night, only full during the day, or participating when, if and when new garages get built. Actually, not if, but when. Second is having zoning provisions for, you know, you know, 2.0 or 3.0 or whatever residential on, you know, several floors above ground floor retail or other, other use, especially in downtown or Cal Ave, potentially on Al Camino Real. You know, so you could have, like, for instance, retail on the ground floor, and then, you know, three floors of, you know, small residential units above that. That's something we've talked about quite a few times, I think, in the past. And the third is, you know, any kind of a, an overlay for downtown or Cal Ave for small or microunits, perhaps to implement what we were just talking about. Are any of those kinds of things planned to come forward currently, or would a colleague's memo from council be helpful in moving those onto the, the future agenda?
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Annually, the city council goes through a process of evaluating the work program for different departments. I think that next opportunity is coming up here in, in March, if I'm not mistaken, February, March? Well, whenever it's happening, the city manager will help coordinate that with the council. And part of our, and each department puts forth a, a work program, we would certainly put forth some, some items as well. And to the extent that any individual project is assigned, it's part through, partly through that effort. The, the effort of the annual code updates cleanup is really trying to capture those items that are not really controversial. I can imagine those items that you've mentioned warranting some kind of public dialogue and conversation. So those would be discrete work items, work projects that we would have to account for in our staff time. We're able to bundle these eight or nine amendments and address these in a relatively non-controversial manner to help improve administration and clarity, and, and that's the effort that we're trying to do with this and future, you know, sort of cleanup ordinances. Those items that you had referenced, and perhaps some others that were mentioned before, I think are discrete work assignments for staff that need to be considered in the balance of other assignments that we have.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Koo.
So, I'm really happy to see the cleanup over here, but I do have some questions in terms of the site development, let me see. For the bulk of the building in packet page 320, which speaks about the floor area ratios and FAR etc., for the auto dealerships. So, when the roof area etc., I mean, what it says over here, parking facilities for required parking related to service and repair areas should be excluded from the calculations. So when I'm looking at all of this ad addition that you did in number three, I think you're speaking mostly to what happened with the Mercedes auto dealership, but then my concern now is about, what about the auto dealerships in the, in the rest of the city, where there is less land and perhaps close to bicycle boulevards and schools and neighborhoods? So, I mean, it's like, this one here kind of takes it citywide, and I have a concern about that. So how, how would we address that?
Thank you, Councilwoman, for your, for your comments. I would say that there's a couple of comments to that. One is, we believe that three remnant I, or one, is a reflection of, of past practice. It has been our standard that we would exempt this parking space, because we believe that the definitions in the code already exempt parking facilities for this type of use. So we have applied this to other projects, and where it came up with the project that you had referenced, it was a point of, it was a question, I think, among some council members, about whether or not staff's interpretation of that, or that reading of that code provision was aligned with other perspectives. And so, the reason we're proposing this here is to, again, memorialize what we believe has been a past practice. And our staff report tries to sort of draw that connection between the definitions to get to that decision point. The, the other one on three remnant two is, extends that concept further, because on that particular project that you mentioned, that was an area of concern. But I, I also think that, that one was a bit of a, you know, I think that probably was a creative way of looking at that code provision. And so the question then to the council is, if we are trying to incentivize auto dealerships for the reasons that we noted in the staff report, this might be another area to consider if we want to exempt that vehicle queuing area where nothing much happens, except for the cars being dropped off or picked up. There was a question in that Mercedes project about was there service or some kind of sales activity taking place there? And in our understanding of that operation, that's not typically what happens. And so, this is just being put forward as a way to, one, memorialize past practice, and then, two, address this other issue about the vehicle queuing and drop-off, which is not as clear in the code.
I guess my main concern here with the queuing etc. is whether it's going to go on the street and impact certain roads. to go on the street and impact certain roads.
Great. Yes, and so that's a different question than the one I answered. We would certainly look at, so one is saying, what this is addressing is, how do we add up the different square footage of a building to see how big it can be, how massive or, you know, can it be? So that's one of scale and mass, what this is trying to address here. The question about queuing and going onto the street is a circulation matter that we would evaluate with any project that is going forward. This actually has nothing to do with that. We would still independently review any project for potential impacts about queuing separate and apart from this language here. This is just saying, do we count it as floor area or not?
Okay, thank you. Then on the housing inventory, so, you know, piggybacking off one of the council members who mentioned, you know, part, less parking and that, less parking as an incentive, right? It concerns me, then, that we still have issues with parking, and yet it's an incentive to build or to consolidate the lots, but we're not addressing the parking issues that's going to come, especially in our quest for growth. You know, there is going to be parking issues, and we see it today. So to say we're going to incentivize building these projects or consolidating for affordable housing, which is a very good deed, but less parking is not going to help out for us moving forward. So I hope that, you know, there's better language over here, or finding something else to incentivize. Then on item F on packet page 321, in the past for us, affordable housing, it's, hasn't it been always 50 years? Why is this one 30?
You know, I think we need a minute to talk about that one and understand that.
Do you want us to come back to that?
Yeah, we'll come back to that one.
All right, do you have other questions?
Yes. So, in, just so to go forward, you know, on these lot consolidations, there are small lots, so we don't know how many units they're going to be. If they're small, if they're five to 10 units, I mean, with that kind of a timeframe, I think one of the concerns would be, when the time comes up, are we going to have another BV situation come around? So, again, you know, I think, please be considerate when you're thinking about how long it is. If we can get these things to be forever, it'll be great. Also, page 322 on I. Site and design review required in the code for mixed-use projects shall be waived by such projects. Why?
So, again, what we're trying to do here is create a list of incentives that would allow an affordable housing provider, developer, to go through a process in a more predictable, streamlined, and less costly way. I mean, one of the things that we hear about affordable housing is the cost of building is, you know, with the various development impact fees, land costs, the providing for parking, and the process time to get through a process, all adds up and makes affordable housing projects difficult. And so the site and design process is one that we have in the city today, where one goes to the planning commission, to the architectural review board, and then to the city council for review. And what we're proposing, and that process could take eight months if everything goes well. And what we're proposing is a process where one goes to the architectural review board, and then there's an appeal process that exists if it needs to get heard before the city council. So it's, the council would still have an opportunity to review it if the project were appealed, but again, it's just, what we're presenting here are what we think is what the Housing, HCD, the Housing Community Development, the State Department that reviews our housing element, we think these are incentives that they thought were important to implement and support the certification of our housing element. So we're trying to find ways to reduce costs and reduce time in processing these types of permits.
Thank you. Packet page 324, for office uses, under medical offices, professional offices, and general business office. I mean, today we heard the dentists over here, and I think most of their buildings might be not over the 0 to 999 square feet. And this is zero for loading.
Right. We're actually not making any changes to that section. The changes are to, in the section above, dealing with retail services, the, retail services and eating and drinking services, the underlying text, 5,000 to 29,999 square feet.
And you don't find that they have loading needs?
I'm sorry, for medical, you're saying?
No, I'm sorry, for retail services and eating and drinking.
No, we're saying that they do at a certain size, at a certain, so for instance, can you go back to that? What's that? So for, what we're, what we're saying on this amendment is that we're trying to reconcile something that we believe was an error that was made decades ago in the code. We believe that there is a, if you look at most of these loading zone requirements, most of them do not require loading for a small, a relatively small amount of land use area. And that's true, except for auto uses, which you would expect to need some kind of additional loading. But all the other ones do not have a loading zone requirement for the first 5,000 or 10,000 square feet. So what we're proposing here is to simply true up what turned out to be a, an error, like a staff error when, you know, decades ago, when the code converted from a text, a line text, to a chart format. That's all we're doing is correcting an error to reflect how the code used to read. The other thing, and the other reason why I think that is the case, is when you have smaller land uses, our zoning, our loading zone requirement, and this gets back to another question that we had earlier, is 40 feet, is 45 feet long by 12 feet wide by 15 feet tall. And that's an extraordinary amount of area. That's just the parking space, not counting the access, you know, to get to that loading zone space. So it takes up a lot of the site to provide a loading zone.
On your research and development, so how do you, so these are office spaces, right, tech workers, et cetera. So how do you address bus pickup and drop-off? You know, I mean, oftentimes I see on Alma, there's those big buses that are parked there, and they take up quite a big, big part of one of the lanes where during commute hours, people are swerving onto the other lane to pass that bus. And it's not always just one, there's always two, there's sometimes two or three of them.
You know, I, we're not, that's not...
I mean, this is loading and unloading. I'm talking about buses. It might be something that you categorize differently.
Yeah, what we're talking about is, so there may be an existing condition that we need to look at and understand more fully. What we're talking about here are, is new development that would be coming through to the city as a new application.
So on housing for seniors, do you know at Channing House, if they are the 50% of the total spaces required for the site?
I don't have any details about that particular site.
For the one that you spoke about, three, on page 327, E modification to off-street loading requirements, I would like to see safety included in there as a word, because when I look at this picture that you have here, that was in the packet, attachment D, and you have for Kepling Street, where the loading and unloading is, and that's coming off a university avenue, making a right turn onto Kepling Street, that could be very dangerous if the, if somebody was walking across and not seeing it. So do you take the consideration of that into account when you're specifying loading and unloading areas?
Yes, we have, any request for off-street, for modify, any, let me back up. All of our projects are reviewed by our transportation staff, which looks at circulation, access, safety, queuing, any number of standards. So those are all things that are evaluated.
So the one that you have on this brochure is not necessarily what we're going with? Or is this determined to be the loading and unloading for a 429?
Well, so I'm not going to speak to 429, because that's a project that is still pending before the council, and so that's kind of its own matter. But I will say that the language on packet page 327 with respect to off-street loading is the language that we're proposing. If councilmembers thought that we needed to add some additional language about specifying safety, we can add that language. And I think your colleague to your right, I think, had some comments about ensuring on-street, concerns about on-street issues. So if there's some comments about that, we can certainly add more language so that we're clear about what we're studying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I still have. So on the mechanical lifts, do you happen to know which properties have the lifts now? And are those lifts and the uses of its efficiency and frequency, are they monitored? Have, is there, I mean, do you guys monitor it? Do they report in to give you a understanding of how efficiently, how efficient it is used in frequency?
You guys have the answers now, right? That's why we're dealing with this.
Right, right.
So, attachment E of your staff report provides a brief list of some projects that we've approved that include lifts. So I do think that we have had some conditions of approval that have required some type of plan be developed along with the project to make sure that safety is addressed or emergency procedures are outlined for the tenants of the building. But we don't have a consistent requirement that requires all of the monitoring and things like that. So our new language would, we have a requirement, and I think in our text now, to provide that additional review.
The reason I ask is because, you know, before we go about approving more of those, we should know if they are actually being used, and both frequently and efficiently. Right. So, and are they ADA compliant? I mean, how do, how does handicap use these spaces if they want to?
For ADA spaces, they would not use lifts.
So it would be just the normal parking spaces allowed?
In our, in our code requirements or for the language that we're proposing, we're definitely specifying that ADA spaces and loading spaces would not be allowed to use any type of mechanical lift system.
Okay.
And again, some of the projects that listed in attachment E, they go back to 2006, 2013, so definitely we've had projects that have been around for a little while now that are utilizing mechanical lifts, and we haven't heard any issues, at least not yet.
Okay. And then for electric cars, I mean, we have all those charging stations. So would you be, would these lift areas have charging stations put in so that people with electric cars might be able to use it, or how would you work that?
So, all of the other requirements that a project needs to comply with would still need to happen. So for all of the charging stations that a project is required to provide, they would need to incorporate that into the design with the lifts.
With the lifts?
I would say, separate from the lifts. You're not going to get a charging station in a lift. So if they're allowed to do X number of lifts, that's fine, but if they're also required to have, say, six charging stations, then you got to provide those six charging stations, which would be separate and independently accessed. They're not going to be...
They're not going to be on the lifts.
Right, we're talking about puzzle lifts where cars are moving around to accommodate something, so there's no way to charge that. I mean, maybe there's a way, but I don't think there's a feasible way.
You know, on number E, mechanical lifts shall not be used for accessible parking spaces or loading. What does accessible parking space?
That's exactly the point that you were talking about with the ADA access.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Councilmember Fine.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for bringing this before. This is helpful, and I think in general, it clears up a few small items in the code. I've got two quick comments and one question. So one comment, just my colleagues, I would be happy to support the staff recommendation as is. I think we could go into details, I'm not sure it's really worth it. Two, there were a couple of comments about parking and why we should or shouldn't necessarily remove the parking requirement for 100% affordable projects. The two main reasons I can think of is, one, by removing the parking requirement, you're lowering the cost of producing that housing, so we get more of the good we're actually seeking. And two, as Palata Housing has spoken to us on numerous occasions, parking demand at many of their sites is less than compared to other housing types. So affordable housing essentially needs less parking in some cases, and we can produce more of it if we require less parking. Just one quick question for staff. Page 329 on the TDM plan number three, it says, "You have to do a TDM for all projects requesting a parking reduction." I'm just wondering if you can quickly go over the different ways you may get a parking reduction? That's pretty broad, and I'm wondering, what are the exact ways of buying out in the assessment or whatever else it might be?
So Claire may have some more details. I think if you turn to page 326 in your packet, you'll see a whole list of reasons why somebody may request a parking reduction.
Okay. So you'll see the table there. So it includes, like, onsite employee amenities, shared parking facilities, senior housing. So there's a variety of different qualifications.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, thank you. So, mechanical lifts, how successful and how much is this utilized in other communities? And I'm glad this isn't going to be allowed for retail or personal service.
So I did some outreach to the various local communities, and basically, the feedback that I received, other than San Francisco, is that everybody, it was still a new thing for projects, and it was reviewed on a case-by-case basis. They didn't have any specific standards in place, the way that we're proposing it now. But San Francisco is definitely one of the jurisdictions that has some specific regulations in place. They allow it for all types of uses, there are no restrictions, and it just, it just is one of the standard, standard parking spaces that's, that would be following along with a regular on, at-grade parking. So basically, what we're trying to do is, we did look at some ordinances that were proposed in Southern California, and I think we basically pulled from that all of the things that seemed to be relevant to our community and came up with what's being proposed here. And also, we did get the direction, again, from the planning commission to try to be not as tight with how we're applying the regulations and have a little bit more flexibility. But I think we're trying to build in some provisions to make sure we're looking at safety and appropriate use in a location and things like that.
So, ground floor parking is not counted towards, I mean, it's allowed. So does that mean ground floor in some of the commercial districts, that mean ground floor, we have some commercial districts here, does that mean ground floor lift parking will not be, or will be allowed on, I'm not saying this very well, that ground, that lift parking would be allowed on the ground floor in retail areas? I mean, it's not something I think is a good idea, anyway, but does this just expand on that?
So I think one of our requirements is that the, is your question one of visual access or floor area?
Both.
Okay, so it would count as, it would not, if it doesn't count as floor area today, it wouldn't count as floor area tomorrow, because it's parking. Parking is parking. From a visibility standpoint, it has to be, we have some requirements in here about, I'm trying to figure out which number it is here, that it has to be, oh, here it is, it's on packet page 328, letter C, has to be located within an enclosed, enclosed parking facility, shall be screened from public view, and architecturally compatible with the site conditions. So we're addressing the screening and the visual aspect of it, and if it's, if it's parking today as a surface parking lot, if it's in a lift, it seems like that should also be exempt.
Not just a surface parking lot, we've had occasions where parking within a retail envelope has been allowed.
Right, because parking facilities are exempt from gross floor areas defined by the code. So if you have a parking structure within a building and it's customer parking, that's exempt by code. Except, as I'm told, except for in the CD zone. Okay. So outside of the downtown area, it would be exempt from parking, and so we don't see that as a different condition.
Exempt from parking meaning exempt from FAR?
I'm sorry, thank you.
So if you have, if you have RT 35 zoning, that means that, no, that's the height, but you have an FAR requirement, that means that the FAR could be increased greatly. but you have an FAR requirement, that means that the FAR could be increased greatly if someone proposed lift parking on the ground floor. Do I understand that correctly? Except the height couldn't be exceeded?
Yeah, I don't know if the, I don't know if the floor area would be, the gross floor area would be increased greatly. Are you saying because you'd have a stacker that would go, you know, two levels up and within the volume space, and therefore, there's two levels of...
Well, if, if, if ground floor parking is exempt from floor area ratio, then could not the floor area ratios for projects in, let's just say, Sofa Two could be increased?
I think you might have touched on it earlier. The height is definitely a 35-foot limit. So you still have your, your three-dimensional buildable area that this project needs to fit within. The floor area, if they choose to construct it in a way that it counts as floor area, then it does count towards the entire project. So I don't think they would, it wouldn't necessarily be, it wouldn't be extra floor area.
Except that we have, if they're 100% affordable housing projects, then we have density bonus laws that exceed the 35-foot height limit as well, or 50-foot height limit, depending if it's RT 35 or RT 50. So I'll just stay on Sofa...
Yeah, I think there's a lot of different parts there. You're, are we talking about, no, are we talking, it sounded like we were talking about the housing inventory sites too for a moment. Is that true? Or, okay.
Both.
So you're, you're putting the whole package together, that you're, you're in the RT 35, and so you're getting these incentives here, but then you could also take advantage of the parking lift incentives and trying to figure out how all that stuff comes together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so I would say that, I, you're, you're right. And this is something that the council needs to understand about the, you know, state density bonus law, is that it does allow for developers who are meeting certain affordability requirements to increase density up to 35%, and they get, upon their request, reductions in parking, lower than the code standards today. And they can ask for concessions, including some that we have on menu and others that they might consider off-menu requests. So anywhere where we have residential density or residential floor area, any one of those sites could increase pursuant to the state density bonus law. And so when you think about that in the context of the, the housing inventory sites that we're looking to consolidate, we would apply the RT 35 standard, which would also be the height of 35 feet, and they'd have to get that project to fit within those parameters, bonus and all, except where they asked for a concession. And a likely concession would be height. And with any of these projects, you would look at the findings required to do that. I would also note that 100% affordable housing project is going to have a, less of a parking demand, based on not only state law, but also with the, with the, his incentives that we're proposing, if those get ultimately adopted. So I wouldn't think that a parking lift structure on a 100% affordable housing project is going to significantly increase the height of, of a building. And in any event, I, I think it's, well, let me just end it there with a period. But we don't have a project, obviously, before us that we're reviewing, so we don't have that prototype.
Yeah, that's kind of it. We don't have a sample that we're using as a test case either. So just to stick with Sofa Two for a minute here. So clarification on packet page 321C. "In the case of a conflict between the provisions of this section and the RT 35 development standards, this section shall, shall control." And then right above that, I should have started with that one, then, so B, right above that is, "For housing inventory properties not located in the RT 35 or RT 50 zones, the RT 35 development standards shall apply, and development of a mixed-use development is not required." I do not understand B at all.
I'll work on B while Claire takes a look at letter C. So what we're saying with, with B is that there are, I think there's like four different zoning types that we're looking at with these 27 properties that we've identified, RT 35, RT 50, CS and CN.
No RT 35.
Okay, just RT 35, CS and CN. And so what B is getting at is for those CS and CN properties. And what we're, one of the incentives that's being proposed is that if you are one of the five properties that are located in the CN or CS zone, that we would apply the RT 35 development standards to those properties. And because in the CS and in the CN zone, you have to have a mixed-use project in order to get housing, the second part of B says you don't need to meet that commercial requirement. You can do 100% residential on a CN or CS zone lot if it's one of these five lots that are in the housing inventory survey.
So basically, as a part of this, we're rezoning?
We're not rez, yeah, I would say we're not...
Well, the development standards are changing, so why aren't we rezoning? It seems like to me that's a rezoning.
What we're saying, well, what we're saying is that for the, it's one of the incentives that we're offering, is that, I mean, there's other requirements that I think need to be met, but it's, what we're proposing is the RT 35 just be applied to that, those, those lots. I mean, yes, we're, it's, it's applying those development standards to those five parcels.
So it's a rezoning?
Well, we're applying those development standards to those parcels. I mean, we're not changing the district map to read RT 35, but we are using that discrete land use development standard for those five properties.
I've just never heard of that being done, without it being a zone change, and it seems, it's...
This is the zone change. This is where we're making the change.
And C, do you want to address that one?
I think that was just...
I think that just, that he just did that. So I guess what I'm looking at here, I have questions also on I, K and L, but I guess what I'm looking at here, none of this was anticipated in the Sofa Two cap, and we keep talking about wanting to do coordinated area plans, but what we're doing here is basically ignoring the coordinated area plan. We're changing parking requirements, we're changing development standards, which a parking requirement is, is a development standard. We're incentivizing lot combining, and we're incentivizing the lot combining on a number of parcels that are on Emerson in a retail corridor. So we don't have any mechanism to, we don't have any mechanism to preserve existing retail. And I can tell you that if these incentives go forward, while they're good, I think, to incentivize housing production, we're going to lose dry cleaners, automobile services, Pilates studios, Jackie so-and-so isn't on this, on this list, but a cobblerie is. We're going to lose all that fine-grained character that's embedded in the neighborhood of Sofa Two, contrary to the ordinance that we just passed, that's the retail preservation ordinance. So even if we redevelop and retail gets put back on the ground floor in this Emerson corridor, which is required, we're going to lose all of those little businesses. And I think it's a travesty, I have to say. I think it's a travesty, not anticipated in the Sofa Two cap, and not one that I think will meet with great favor in the neighborhood, who use those services day in and day out. You know, we, we have a conflict here of wanting to produce housing and wanting to preserve neighborhood and neighborhood services and keep people from driving, you know, to other communities to get the services they can't any longer get in Palo Alto. So I, I, I think, I think what we're doing here, or looking to do here, is really antithetical to what the community wants and the community, quite frankly, needs. Having to do with TDM, so I think I've said that, clearly, it was just like, we're in conflict with the retail preservation ordinance, and we're in conflict with the Sofa Two plan. And we're going to lose all these, potentially, a lot of these neighborhood-serving businesses.
And on that, on the latter point there, the difference being, just so I'm clear, is really as it relates to the parking incentives, it seems. Because what, what we're suggesting is that in the Sofa Two area, where you only have RT 35 zone properties that are these housing inventory sites, 21 of them, the development standard is not changing for those properties. What is changing is the park, there's the parking incentives that are proposed. That's the difference. Because any of those 21 properties could do an affordable housing project today, they wouldn't benefit from the parking incentives, the financial incentives about waiving fees or the streamlining efforts. But in theory, that could happen today, and presumably, that was envisioned in the cap.
So I guess what I'm pointing to is incentives incentivize redevelopment. And that's the purpose of incentives. But in this area, the incentives are going to have devastating negative effect, because it's going to incentivize redevelopment of parcels that hold, you know, the cobblerie and those sorts of places.
Sure. And, and again, that's, I understand your comments, and that's for council deliberation to talk about the, I mean, this is, we have, we have compete, you know, we have different policies and different, you know, we, we need to balance those, those priorities that we have. And so, yes, I would, I look forward to the council deliberation on that point.
Well, I would just say, like, if 21 of these sites are in Sofa Two, that's really a neighborhood, 20, 21 of these sites. That's phenomenal. It's really phenomenal.
And, and these are, and these are sites that were identified in the housing element as opportunity sites for the production of affordable housing. And, and looking at Sofa Two here, there certainly are references, you know, explicitly to the housing element and the housing rate program and recognition of, of housing policies changing over time. But I, I do understand that some of these, you're, you're right, we are trying to create incentives, and those incentives would result in redevelopment of those, those properties. That's, that's the objective. And so the council will need to weigh the benefits of that or, or not.
Yeah, I, I would encourage the council and staff to do some outreach to the neighborhood to see what their feelings are about this kind of change in the neighborhood. TDMs, I agree with other comments. I think 100 trips is too much. Also, there are some TDRs out there that don't require parking currently. The new ones do require parking, but the old, there's some old ones, I think, that are still out there. Those should require a TDM program, it would seem. And I agree with Councilmember DeBois that the reporting intervals should be probably annually after the first two years. The auto dealerships, I don't know of any auto dealerships that are quite the way I was hearing them, or at least understanding them being described by the staff. I think of, I think of some of the auto dealerships that have service as associated with the, with the dealership. And it's pretty, it's pretty massive, the amount of floor area ratio that's dedicated to parking for cars that are being serviced. So I think that's, I think that's a big, a big loophole that I think we would live to regret. And also, the onsite loading zone, I think other councilmembers have spoken to that. I think it's, even though the, the size of the trucks may be smaller, I'm downtown and I see fairly frequently cars that, or excuse me, trucks that are blocking the street. So it's, it's becoming more and more of an urban hazard to have, have trucks parked in the street while they're loading and unloading. So I think those are my comments.
So I had a couple of comments. I guess I want to understand what we told HCD in terms of the small lot consideration. Did we tell them we would do any of these A through G? Did we, A through M? What was, what were the, I guess, promises or implied promises that we made in our housing element?
If you could just give me a moment, I can pull up the specific program language, and I can share that with you.
I mean, I, I'll just say that I think Councilmember Holman raises some good points in, in Sofa is a, Sofa is a wonderful neighborhood. And, I mean, there are certain of those sites that, that I think I would be fine with being redeveloped, but there are a lot of little neighborhood retails. I mean, I was pulling up some of them, and some of them are dry cleaners and small businesses and, and, you know, we, we talk about neighborhood character a lot, and this is something that actually could really change the neighborhood character. And so I, I do have concerns about, about it. Now, I'm concerned that in a lot of places, small lot consideration, like on El Camino, would be a really good thing. I just think that it's unfortunate that we seem to have all of these in, in the Sofa Two area. So I'm not quite sure what to do with this, frankly.
So I'd like to read you the program language, if that's okay? Okay. So amend the zoning code to create zoning incentives that encourage the consolidation of smaller lots identified as the housing inventory sites and developed with 100% affordable housing projects. Incentives may include development review streamlining, reduction in required parking for smaller units, or graduated density when consolidated lots are over one-half acre. Adopt amendments as appropriate, provide information regarding zoning incentives to developers. So that's H 2.1.9 program.
Okay.
Mayor Sharp, if I could just add a little color to this. Hillary Gittleman, the planning director, I just wanted to recall back to when we were working on the housing element. This wasn't really an idea that we came up with when we were drafting the housing element. It was something that the State Office of Housing and Community Development asked us to put into our housing element. This was like the one program that they wanted to see before they would certify our housing element. And I think all of us understood at that time, they were asking for something that was going to be a little hard. It was going to be a little difficult. And they luckily were okay with the way we wrote it, where it's an incentive program for simply projects that are 100% affordable. I mean, they could have asked us to write this program to incentivize any housing development on these lots, but by asking for it to be 100% affordable projects, I think they, they allowed us to set a pretty high bar. And so I know there's some fear, you know, that we're pulling a thread and the whole thing will unravel. I think between us here, we see this as a modest program. It may help someone who's already got a gleam in their eye about redeveloping one or more of these sites, but it's unlikely to have a dramatic impact on the assessment of a property owner about whether to pursue a redevelopment of one of these small sites. So I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but it's kind of something we got pushed into.
No, it makes me feel a little better. I guess the question is, is that we can take some of these sites off of our housing opportunity sites, and, and if we move, if we add other, if we add something else. For instance, if we said on the Frye's site, instead of 600 units, we want, I don't know what we have there right now, but say five, I think 500 or 600, we said we wanted 700 units or 750, then we could remove all of these small opportunity sites in Sofa that we might have concerns about. Would that be correct?
I, I think you're right. We could go back and reexamine the housing inventory and remove some sites and add more or increase densities on some existing sites. And, and that's one of the ideas we've been, we've been assessing as part of the comp plan with regard to those sites on San Antonio. If we remove those, where can we increase densities or add sites elsewhere? We could, we could explore the same kind of approach here, but in the interim, unfortunately, we're, we're up against the wall, and we kind of have to follow through with this commitment we made when the housing element went to the state.
So how many units are in the Sofa area total that we're talking about?
We can look at that list, we hand it out to you and, and figure that out if you'll give us a few minutes.
All right, well, can be a rough number. I mean, it doesn't have to be exact. Is it like 20 or 50 or, you know, 55? It's like 20? Okay. All right. All right. All right. Thanks. All right. So now, we'll return to council for motions, comments, questions, et cetera. Councilmember Fine?
So I'd like to move that we adopt the ordinance, Attachment A, to amend Title 18, and find it exempt from SEQA.
Second. Now, I think that councilmembers may want to break out some of these to vote separately on some of these items. And in looking at the ordinance itself, you know, it's broken down into sections. So I'm thinking if you want to pull out a section to vote separately on it, you should ask me, but why don't you ask me by section, like to Section 4, Section 5? I think that makes the most sense. I'm open to other thoughts if people have other thoughts. But that seems, and if you obviously want to make, you know, amendments, et cetera, it's fine. So, Councilmember Fine, you want to speak to your motion?
Sure. I, I think generally, this is moving in the right direction. These are a number of small to medium cleanups. I think there are some issues where we may want to look at the housing inventory sites again. But part of this is following up on what the city has, has shown a desire to increase affordable housing, and that's kind of across the board. So we can't constantly be shifting these sites. I think overall, this is moving us forward on a lot of the right things in terms of updating the housing definitions, loading spaces, entitlement approvals, and the TDM plans, I think, are helpful for our city going forward. With that, I would really appreciate your support. But as the mayor said, let's, we can go through these 1 through 8 and see what folks want.
All right. I'll speak to the motion briefly. I, first of all, want to thank staff for, you know, bringing these forward. I think these are good items that we need to, that we need to get some clarity in the code. And if we don't approve something, it doesn't necessarily mean that we've given any direction to staff then. So then, the status quo would prevail. So if you're providing whatever, doing whatever you're doing, unless we change it in a motion, then you continue to do what you would be doing. That's the way I read this. So hopefully, we can, you know, move this forward, get five votes for things. And the other thing I'd really like is, if possible, if we could sort of decide upfront a little bit, if, if there's stuff that's not controversial, and we can focus on the controversial stuff. So if you are good with the rest of it, and you're not good with something, say you're not good with something, and then if you really want that pulled out, ask me. And if I hear more than two people wanting to pull it out, or two people or more, we'll pull that out. It might be more efficient, but if you want to make a motion to pull it out, you know, I can break them, it's up to the mayor to break it out. So I'm basically saying, if you have two people that want to pull something out, we'll pull it out and vote separately on it. So I think that should be fairly, fairly easy. I also, I think, I would say what Adrian said, I support, I support most of this. A couple of you have made comments that I support. I support Councilmember DuBois's concept that we should have, probably have earlier reporting on the TDM. I think that's a good, I'll leave him to make that amendment. There were a couple of other comments I think people made. I have a lot of concerns about what Councilmember Holman said on that. I also have concerns that we did talk to HCD and did that, and I don't really want the wrath of HCD coming down on us at the same time. I am thinking in my mind that it might be worthwhile to relook at housing inventory sites if we do pass this. I am also actually sort of concerned about the whole parking idea. I didn't really like staff's answer on the, on the issue of parking. I was a little concerned that, I don't think parking should be an incentive if low-income housing is going to use it the same. I actually understood that low-income housing used it less, but I'm not sure it then should be zero. I think, I don't think parking should be an incentive. I think we should park to what is required. That means if low-income housing uses less parking, their parking requirement should be less. And there is also some state stuff that reduces it anyway. So I'm not sure I'm supportive, but we'll see where people go. I probably wouldn't vote against it just on that issue, but I, I do have concerns about not fully parking projects, especially in, frankly, especially in areas of SOFA II. I, I think that if we built a bunch of these without parking in SOFA II, that would be a problem. So I will hear what other people have to say. Councilmember Ness.
So a couple of questions. I'm, I'm very sympathetic, Karen, with what you said. At the same time, though, Hillary, to ask you, 100% affordable means what?
It means that all of the units developed on the site would have to meet the definition of low, very low moderate, or moderate income housing, so less than 120% of area median. So they would have to be deed restricted units.
I see no way that any developer could put together any type of parcel in that area. I know that area well. I mean, you, you would really have to do handstands, and on top of that, you're going to have to get, you're going to have to get funding from at least five different sources. So I, I think that's one of those where, we've just passed the retail ordinance, and now we're talking about this from another angle, and it's not making much sense to me. So I don't know how it can be rewritten or not written, but I, I think that's one of those, if you could make that happen, I'd be, I'd be absolutely amazed at it. Because you've, you've got to get a fair number of units to get any kind of funding from the state, from the federal government, and so forth. Am I correct?
You're absolutely right. I mean, what this is setting up as an incentive is an extremely high bar on small sites. It's, it's really, you know, we're doing our best with the sites we identified in the housing element to come up with a package of incentives, but really, they're, the expedited review and waiving the planning fees are probably the most meaningful of these. The others would be really, really hard to, to make use of.
So I see your concern, Karen, but for the life of me, I can't see how they could put something together there. Now, whether or not we leave it in as is, because it meets the housing code, a housing element, I think is up to the nine of us. But I, I just would not see it being threatened in any way, especially not with the retail ordinance having just been passed. I certainly think people are going to look at that differently, who might look to develop something in that area.
One, one thing I should add to Mayor Scharf's point, which is, I think HCD would be absolutely thrilled if we tried to identify other larger sites than these in our housing inventory. I think they forced us to include this program to develop incentives because they, they thought these sites were so small. So it's something, you know, I think that if the council wanted to adopt this, but direct us to do that in the future, is something we could go back and revisit after the, we get through the comp plan process and the question on the San Antonio sites. This might be the next question to look at in that regard.
So somewhat flippantly, but I don't think you're going to get 700 houses on the Frye site. I could be wrong. That's it.
All right. Councilmember DuBois.
So quick question on this. So I'm a little confused now on the SOFA II sites. Do they still require retails? They would be mixed-use, 100% affordable with retail on the bottom? Is that, is that right?
That's right.
Okay. So, so I think it was a good conversation. But I, I kind of agree with the planning director that we won't get a ton of projects there. Hopefully, we get one or two affordable housing. And so, I think, I think these incentives are actually warranted for these lots, and I'm comfortable kind of leaving them as is. I do have three small amendments. So the first would be to change, unpack it page 329, Section 12, 3, to change every three years to every year thereafter in the TDM reporting.
That's fine. I was going to make everything unfriendly, but I'll accept that.
Okay. So I don't know if I need to restate that, David, or if you caught that? Section 12, number 3. The second motion is on page 321. So it'd be replaced every three years with every year.
And what section is that?
Okay, so I'm sorry, so the next one? 321. I guess it's, it's the heading for 1842140, Section 5. It would be to change Housing Elements Housing Inventory to read the, I think it's the 2015 Housing Element Housing Inventory.
It should be the 2015-2023 housing.
Right.
Where is that?
So in Section 5, the first paragraph where it says 1842140.
Yep.
Inventory sites. The first sentence, it'll show apply to the sites listed in the 2015 to 2025 Housing Element Housing Inventory. So it's to make it specific.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great, thank you. And the last one is on page 329. Section, so Section 11I1. I would propose that we change it from 100 new net trips to 50 net new trips.
So I, I don't think I'm going to accept that yet, but I do have a question to staff. How did you come up with 100?
The 100 was derived from the VTA guidelines we use to determine when a quantitative traffic analysis is needed for a development project.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm not ready to accept that one yet.
Give me a second.
Okay.
We have a second.
Okay.
Speak to your motion.
So I am open to a different number. I just, I don't think I've ever seen a project come to us that generated 100 net new trips. It just seems like something that won't occur. And I think we're interested in TDM programs. And so, I think maybe some lower number, and I just picked 50, but I'd be open to a different number.
Can you second it?
Yeah. 50 is as good a number as anything else, so I'm supportive of that and agree with your concept.
All right. I'm going to clear the, the board if anyone wants to speak to this amendment. You don't have to. Okay. I, I just have a question on it. What is the difference in a project? What are we looking at? I mean, when you say 50 trips, or 75 trips, or 25 trips, I don't really have a feel for what I'm voting on. Am I voting for, I mean, how big a project are we talking? I mean, what are we, what are we looking at here?
Well, if you think about the projects where we do a quantitative analysis, we have two in the research park right now that are big replacement projects where we did traffic studies, I'm pretty sure. Although, I'm not sure they had net new.
This is net, net new trips too, not just total.
That's right. It's net new. And, and we, we do err on the side of, you know, being conservative when we have development projects. Sometimes we do require studies for less than 100 trips. I mean, so there's some rationale for going lower. It's just, we thought that, right now, the code is written that these things are voluntary. It's when people want to request a parking reduction. So this is a change. We're going to impose a requirement for the first time, and we thought we should use the standard as it's written in the VTA guidance. So, but it's up to council.
Okay. Councilmember Phil Seth.
I was just going to say that, that, you know, my back of envelope on this one was, right? I mean, if you use the city's current standing assumption of four, four cars per thousand square feet, then in order to get to 100 cars, if every single one drives at peak, right, then you need 25,000 square feet, right? Now, not every single one's likely to build, to drive at peak, right? So somebody's going to come through, and they're going to say, you know, 75% and so forth. So you're looking at this applying to projects that are 30, 40, 50,000 square feet, and we just don't have a lot of those, right? Which is, I think, to Councilmember DuBois's point, that at 100, you know, we're never going to see it, right? And I think that's the justification for looking for a lower number.
All right. Councilmember Walbach.
Just wanted to check, does this apply to all types of development, or only commercial? Or only for office and R and D? Or does it apply to retail? Does it apply to restaurants? Does it apply to residential?
It would apply to any project that generated that, those trips.
Okay. All right.
Let's vote on the board. And that passes on a 6 to 2 vote, with council members Walbach and Fine voting no. All right. Back to you. You're done? All right. You know, I cleared the board, so put your lights back on. Councilmember Holman.
Follow-up on the last amendment. So I'd mentioned earlier about the TDRs that are out there that don't require parking. So would this apply to that extra square footage? So if you had a TDR that gave you an extra 1.0 FAR, let's say, you'd still, you'd still accumulate the trip count. So in that way, the TDRs that are unparked, you'd still, they'd get swept up with this, correct?
Yeah. It's any new development that's proposed without regard to what their current parking requirement is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we're, we're covered there. On, the onsite loading, what number is that? I would like to delete number, well, Section 2050A3. I would like to delete 3.
Oh, she's doing the automobile dealerships.
It's the floor area ratio elimination.
No, no, I'm not going to accept this one.
So I need a second.
Second by Councilmember Koo. So you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just, I mean, I, I have experienced other, in other communities, how much floor area ratio can be taken up by some of these uses. And I think it could be an unfortunate outcome.
So she's talking. Page 320. Councilmember Koo, you want to speak to your thing? 320.
I'm just not really comfortable at all with parking facilities and with the parking for service and repair, and not count it towards the floor area. Basically, the bulk of the building is going to be a lot larger because of that. So I'm really not comfortable with that, and especially on the part about queuing for drop-off. I understand it's a cleanup, but it doesn't address, it, it's just too wide. It, it goes too wide into the city.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, I was actually going to hold my nose and support, support the original motion, right? But not for exactly the same reason we're talking about here. I mean, I think as, as Jonathan pointed out earlier, FAR is about building size, right? Basically, bounds how big a building you can put on this size of lot, right? And, but I think, I mean, that obviously, the Mercedes dealership issue has, has come up here, right? I think if we decide that it's in the best interests of residents that we allow a bigger building, okay? And I think that is the case with the Mercedes dealership, right? Then it seems like we should just raise the FAR, okay? Because if we're doing this kind of stuff, we're sort of slicing and dicing, you know, how the space is used inside the building. And I think really, you want the building owner to do that, right? As opposed to the city getting involved and saying, well, if it's this use, you can have and so forth, right? On the other hand, what I do like about this motion is it makes it clear, and it says, in the automobile zoning code, in the automobile overlay code, you are allowed to have a bigger building. It sort of goes through an indirect way to do that, but you're allowed to have a bigger building. And I think, you know, the Mercedes, I mean, automotive over, automotive dealership overlay, there are not very many places in town, okay, where we have that. In fact, we sort of have that one, okay, out by East Bay Shore. And it's next to the freeway, and it's out of town, and we have a slightly bigger building there. I think that's actually a good use of that land. So I actually thought that, that the staff motion is a reasonable way, is a reasonable thing to do. I think it makes sense, I think it makes sense for the community to have that there. I don't particularly like the way they do it. I think it would have been much simpler and more direct just to raise the F. I think it would've been much simpler and more direct just to raise the FAR target for that building. But this does put it in the code, and it is kind of a custom code for this land use. So I, I think I'm gonna vote against the amendment, right? And for the original motion, if I said that right. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Walbach.
Uh, I'll associate my views on this one with exactly what Councilmember Phil Seth just said.
Okay, seeing no other, let's vote on the, let's vote on the board.
So we're voting on the amendment?
Yeah, we're voting on the amendment, so if you don't wanna support the amendment, you vote no. And that fails on a, um, six to two vote, with councilmembers Koo and Holman voting yes. Okay, I have no lights. Oh, back to you, you're still more.
Yes, yeah. Um, actually, I had one question, it go, it's on packet, page three nineteen, I'm sorry, I neglected to ask this earlier. I didn't understand the language. That's the new language under, um, one thirty-five point five and one thirty-eight. And just going to the replacement language, it says, "A residential use of property and shall be subject only to those restrictions that apply to other dwellings of the same type in the same zone." It seemed like the pre-existing language was clearer.
Okay, so where are you at?
Um, on packet page three nineteen.
Yep.
Under one thirty-five point five.
Yep.
It's where the, the new language is inserted. And the same thing down with, um, one thirty-eight, where the new language is inserted. I didn't understand that.
So.
Because, you know, we're talking about zoning, but then we're talking about, in this replacement language, subject only to restrictions that apply to other dwellings of the same type. What, what's, what's trying to be said there?
So the, the, the change is, today, the code reads that, uh, we treat this like any other multifamily use. And the change is that we treat it as a residential use. So it extends to all the residential districts, not just the multifamily districts. And this is, uh, language straight from the state, uh, standard.
Okay. And then having to do with, um, Section Five. The, um, housing inventory sites. I, and the small lot consolidation. Hillary is, at least according to my memory, correct about, you know, actually, we started out with, like, consider small lot consideration, consolidation. And then it became, you know, do small lot consideration. So we've gone through this kind of iteration, that's gotten us down this, I won't call it a garden path, because I think it is not. So I'm actually, and I appreciate, you know, what, what Councilmember Niss or Vice Mayor Niss said about, it won't happen because people have to, like, consolidate these lots. But that happens as well. And, um, you know, I am the-
It was for affordable housing a hundred percent.
Yeah, I understand. But I am the zone for what you want gal, you know? And so, um, I am going to, uh, make an amendment that actually Section Five be deleted, and that staff come back with alternate, um, uh, alternate locations.
No, it's Section Five.
So I'm, I'm not gonna accept that, and I could speak to it, but.
No, just don't accept it. Is there a second to that? Seeing no second.
Okay, then one other, one other, um, amendment in Section Five then. F, housing site, uh, housing units shall be deed restricted for a hundred percent informal housing units for no less than thirty years. Councilmember Fine and I were having a conversation over here, we thought it was at some point in time gonna be fifty-five years, so I'd offer that amendment to be fifty-five years.
Councilmember Fine accepts that?
I'd accept that, and a quick question to staff. I thought we had previously talked about changing those references to thirty years to fifty-five kind of across the board. Am I mistaken, or?
Yeah, I, I think, um, I think we could do fifty-five here.
Okay.
I think we may have, um, as we're talking, and have been talking since the question was asked, we think that there was another previ, um, you, uh, may recall, we were talking about, um, hotel conversions at one point to affordable housing. And there, the thirty years was significant because it had to do with the, um, when the assessor's office, uh, reevaluated, reassessed property. So I think in this instance, we can do fifty-five years, and that was just a inadvertent.
Thank you.
And, and then, I think lastly, is the, um, loading zone? And I'm looking for which number that is. Here it is, Section Eight. I guess I would look to, um, look to colleagues to come up with some.
Well, you have the floor.
Yeah, I know. So, um, I'm not really comfortable with, with this just being totally discretionary. You know, with new development, with existing development, I can understand why. We have a lot of older buildings that don't have even their own parking, let alone an onsite loading zone. But, um, I'm not comfortable with this being discretionary. So, um, I don't have specific language, I apologize for that, but I look to somebody else who might second an amendment to come up with language.
So are you done, and should I go to Councilmember Phil Seth? He's got his light on, or?
That'd be good, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Where are, Karen just make a motion?
No, she did not.
I was looking for language, it's, it's packet page three twenty-seven, and it's Section Eight, modifications to off-street loading requirements.
I actually wanted to ask another question about that one, if I could, which is, if it says here that-
I still want you to speak into your mic.
Right. It says, it says here, "The director may modify the quantity or dimensions of off-street loading for non-resident, et cetera." Says, "On a finding that the off-street loading may conflict with comprehensive plan goals and policies." Is, is that what we're saying is?
May not.
What? Page three twenty-seven.
Yeah, it should be that there is no conflict.
Okay. Right.
So upon a, so let's see, let me just read this from the beginning here. Address. And upon a finding.
I, I think it's correct. What it's saying is if an applicant has an off-street loading requirement, so on their parcel.
Yeah.
And the director finds that that provision of loading on their parcel would conflict.
Right.
That we can allow the shared parking in an alley or on street. And I think one of the council members pointed out that this finding could be expanded to say that that on-street solution doesn't itself cause impacts. So we could get both sides of the question. The other thing I, I wanted to point out is this is very similar to the way parking exceptions are dealt with. The decision is made by the director, and then, of course, the council has the ability to review that decision on appeal, if, if something, if a project gets appealed.
If somebody appeals.
Right.
See, I think it oughta be a pain in the neck, okay, to get around the loading zone restrictions on a, on a new building. And I understand the issue with existing legacy buildings and so forth, right? But on a new building, I think it oughta be a pain in the neck to get around that one. Is there any guidance that you could put, so it wasn't sort of purely discretionary?
Yeah, I guess, uh, the one thing I would say about this issue is that we are a community that long ago decided that shared parking was the way we wanted to go. And the reason was, if you think about downtown, is we didn't want a little driveway going into every single parcel in downtown. So we consolidated our parking.
Yeah.
In centralized lots and garages.
Right.
We've thought of loading in downtown and other parts of Palo Alto the same way, where there's an opportunity for a shared on-street or alley loading space. We have found that preferable to every parcel having its own big massive driveway and, uh, you know, red space and, you know, um, a loading provision. So that's where this practice has come from, and what we've tried to do in this language is just, you know, kind of memorialize what we've been doing, uh, through a sort of labyrinthine interpretation of the current code.
Okay. And if it conflicts with comp plan goals and policies? Then how do we reconcile that?
No, I think it has to conflict with comp plan goals, to be granted.
To be granted? It has to conflict or conform?
No, it has to con, it has, it has to conflict. All right, we can't grant it unless there's, unless it doesn't meet a comp plan goal, unless there's a comp plan goal, reason to do it.
Yeah, I think what we could do is modify this paragraph, so it says, A, the on-street load, providing the on-street loading onsite would conflict, and B, the use of shared park, assured loading offsite would not conflict.
I see.
You know what I mean?
Okay.
You wanna propose that as an immediate?
That I got, okay. That I understand.
Why don't you make that motion? Yeah, why don't you propose that as the amendment? We can all get behind that.
So that'll be, that'll be part of it, right?
I'd second that, since I'm the one who would like to use.
Yeah, you would second that? Okay. Based on existing or proposed site conditions, that basically means anything. Right? So, uh, so the, the place we got to, I like that as a reason, okay?
Okay, should I try some language?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we do is, in the paragraph that's there in Section E.
Yeah.
I, I guess we have to use a little Roman numeral one or something.
Mm-hmm.
After, where it says, "To address loading and unloading activities," semicolon, "and upon a finding that Roman numeral one, the off-street load, uh, the off-street loading may conflict with comprehensive plan goals and policies related to site design planning, blah, 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 blah." And, Roman numeral two.
Right.
"The use of shared on-street loading would not conflict with, um, area circulation or comp plan policies."
Okay. So, and then my, my other question on this language, so that was, that one was the one that confused me the most, so thank you very much.
So while we're doing this, do you accept that? Or not? You wanna?
I wanna see it written up, but I think I'm inclined to.
And I know Councilmember Holman's ready to second it, not, but we don't have to have a vote if you accept it.
Just, I just wanna see.
Right.
Sorry to interrupt, but it's also, Section Seven and Eight have the same clause, it should be in both places.
We'd have to make the same change in the table in seven.
Correct.
I wanted to ask about another, at the right point in time when, when, when we're ready. I wanna ask about another clause in this long sentence here. Which is the one that says, the first one says, uh, "Based on existing or proposed site conditions." That sort of means anything. I think, right?
It's, yeah, it's, I would say that it's, uh, broadly written, because we don't know the individual constraint that may apply to a specific property. So it, there could be, uh, it could be a narrow lot, it could be, it could have a structure that's staying on the lot.
Right.
I mean, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a wide variety of scenarios that could be the situation why one might wanna allow the loading zone to occur not onsite.
But, so that basically means, if I understand that, there's no basis for appealing this, because it says you can do anything. It says we can do it, the city can do anything.
The director, uh, would make a decision.
Okay.
And, um, and upon a finding of that decision, I guess, it is a discretionary action, and, uh, you know. So there's the, there's the permit that this would be associated with.
Right.
And then that can be appealed.
It could be appealed. But if it says based on, if it says something as broad as this, is there any basis for an appeal?
Yeah, because the code says you gotta do the onsite loading.
Ah. Okay. Okay.
All right, you have more questions, or you're done?
Not, not, not on this one. The, uh, I actually wanted to, uh, go back to the, yet again, the small lot consolidation one, but.
Okay, before we go there, I just wanna make sure Councilmember Fine was good with this. I'm good with it, it's in. Do you have addressed this issue, Councilmember Holman? Okay, what, what's the?
So about this, um, it says, "Shared," where'd it go? And the use of "shared on-street loading." Why is it "shared on-street loading"? Cause it just, why not just "on-street loading"? Because what, what is "shared on-street loading"?
Well, the, the whole concept of putting loading onsite, uh, I mean, on the street, is you'll stripe a red zone or something, and it's a shared resource that, um, anyone can use. It's not reserved for that individual property owner. So it'll be a red curb. Or yellow curb.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with the word "shared," just because, um, my experience, again, being downtown, is just like, trucks just pull up and park in the street. They don't go to the curb. They don't even go to the curb. So, um, for me, if the maker of this amendment would appreciate it, or would accept it just taking out, out the word "shared," cause I think it's meaningless.
It's okay with me.
Well, I'm not sure it's okay with me. I mean, I, I think the term "shared," I mean, not to be manipulative, but I, I think the term "shared" implies what we're, we're looking for people to do, which is to share the unload zoning. We want them to do that. And that, that's the whole goal, is that if there is a loading zone there, that they use the loading zone, and that you don't, this is not your loading zone for your project. It's the loading zone that's there that anyone can use, and that's what we should strive for.
But isn't, but the, the, the wordsmithing here, which I don't like to do, right? But.
Well, it's after eleven, it's always a good time.
I know, I know, right? But, but if, if you eliminate, the issue is if it, if it conflicts with the comp plan, okay?
Right.
So if you eliminate the word "shared," does it not conflict with the comp plan anymore? I mean, I, I gra, I, I got what you, I understand what you mean. It's just, does "shared" add any value there? Cause we're talking about conflicting with the comp plan. That is, if it's, if it's not shared, does it conflict with the comp plan?
Does Steph, you're fine either way, right?
We're fine either way.
Let's take out the word "shared."
Okay.
Good, thank you all.
All right. Seeing no further lights, can we vote on the board?
What are we voting on?
A motion.
The whole thing?
The whole thing. I didn't, unless, is there more lights?
I, I wanted to go back to the, to, sorry, I wanted to go back to the, uh, the lot consolidation one for a second.
Okay.
And the parking. I wasn't sure that we resolved that one completely.
I, I have no light, I didn't have to clear the light. Oh, the voting lights, all right.
So. So I'm still not comfortable, I, I'm still not a hundred percent comfortable using parking as an incentive. I mean, I know we want an incentive, right? But, I mean, have we not learned our lesson by now, right? With giving away parking, right? Especially in sofa, I mean, so, so, you know, this is like the, the parking congestion map, and like, big chunks of sofa are like the red zone here, right? So if, I'm concerned if we give away parking, then we say, okay, more people have a right to this, then they're gonna be fighting with everybody else, and the dentist, and the watercourse way, and everybody else, right? So, so, on the other hand, you know, I mean, if we think that affordable housing's gonna have less parking than other places, but it's probably not zero, then do we really wanna, I mean, maybe it should be, you know, fifty percent parking requirement or something like that. I mean, what, what does staff think?
Yeah, I, I think, um, we proposed two things in this section. One is the reduction in the guest parking.
Guest parking, yeah.
And the other is, uh, no parking for really small units, less than five hundred square feet.
But the issue is if somebody, I think, is if somebody consolidates these lots, and they put up an apartment building that's got three times as many units as there used to be there, even if some of them are small, doesn't mean they won't have cars. I mean, I mean, I'm sensitive to the argument they might have fewer cars per unit, but they probably, probably not gonna have zero cars.
Uh, I think we, we'd be open to some modifications here if you have something to suggest. We, we do think, given the language in the housing element, that HCD's gonna be looking for a parking incentive. It's not, it's probably not okay to just have streamlined review and.
Right, right.
Reduce fees, they, they really, they said, um, "Such as, um, streamlining reduction in parking requirements or graduated densities." And we haven't provided graduated densities, so it kind of feels like we should do something on the parking side. And we thought smaller units, uh, close to transit, I mean, sofa is, you know, walkable to downtown. There would be, um, uh, less parking demand, both because-
I think we could get away with fifty percent.
Yeah.
I'd be good with that. I'd be good with that. If the maker, maker of the motion?
Nope. So I'll second that. So, I'll second that.
Okay, I'm going to propose the, carry it. So, I think I've already spoken to my motion.
Yeah, I'm just going to say I agree with Councilmember Phil Seth is that, you know, giving away parking in, in these areas as an incentive is the wrong incentive. And I understand that HCD wants it. I understand it's expensive. I think by moving to 50%, we're recognizing that low-income housing produces less. So, we're striking that balance. We're not saying they have to fully park it. I think that works. So, I'm going to support it. Councilmember Walbach?
So, just to clarify, so it's item K there would say, instead of saying no parking is required for residential units less than 500 square feet, it would say, parking requirements for units less than 500 square feet would be reduced by 50%.
And we're still keeping the guest parking, a reduction of 30%. So, you have that as well for HCD.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Walbach?
So, this is an interesting, but I think a very important question. And I think there are a lot of different ways we could approach this. And I can say any of them are invalid, but I think it's, it's an important thing for us to think very, very carefully about. This is for below market rate units, correct? Okay, so below market rate units, less than 500 square feet, near transit. If there's ever going to be a type of housing which is less likely to require substantial parking or any parking, that's it. It, it doesn't get more, you know, it, it doesn't get more, you know, pedestrian friendly than that, just by the design inherently. And the state understands that at HCD. We've seen it with Palo Alto Housing and other nonprofit developers who provide affordable housing, that affordable housing in general, at regular sizes, doesn't require as much car use because, you know, especially the lower income levels, a lot of folks can't afford to maintain and upkeep and own a car. And I know for most of us, that's a hard thing to wrap our heads around, that here in Palo Alto, there are people who can't afford a car. Of course, there's people on the other end who can't afford a place to live, so they only have their car. And, you know.
You know, my mother-in-law fits that profile. She's got four cars, okay? And none of them run, but okay.
I was referring, I was referring to the folks who are, who are living in their cars. And I'm sorry to hear if that's where your, your mother-in-law is at. I'll let you guys deal with that one. So, I'm not going to be supporting the motion. I guess what might win me over is if we gave a choice to the developer, that they could go to the zero if, as a condition of approval, they would forego having their residents be able to buy permits in the RPP district. You know, this is something we've, you know, we've talked about doing, right? They say, you know, or they could reduce it marginally, you know, to that degree, that, you know, only half, if, if they went down to, you know, 25%, then, you know, they'd have to, you know, only 25% of their units could be eligible for an RPP permit. I don't know if that's something we could do or if that's too complex and would require too much legal and staff work to, to work out, if that's an option.
Well, Councilmember Fulls, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Walbach, we do, we do owe the council an answer about whether we could legally do that. I'm not sure that we've gotten to the finish line on that analysis yet. Also, we do owe the council a study of parking demand by housing type for different types of housing, locations of housing, affordable housing versus market rate housing. It's another program in our housing element that we're trying to prioritize this year. And with that information, we will be able to suggest any modifications to the standard and other parking standards based on, on real data from our community. But we just, we just don't have it gathered together yet.
Okay. So, I appreciate that. Okay, so I won't propose that as an amendment at this point. I think those are things we can look at in the future. You know, if it comes backwards, we have those studies and, you know, you know, we're wrong, you know, those of us who are not supporting this amendment, if we're, you know, we're wrong, then we can change it in the future. But the idea that we would not address parking as an incentive to encourage affordable housing, I've heard several people in this dayhouse say that they don't think we should be using reduced parking requirements as an incentive to promote affordable housing. Well, you know, in the recent election, everybody who, one, ran on being an affordable housing advocate. And parking requirements are one of the most severe obstacles to affordable housing. So, I just want to make sure we're really thoughtful and consistent in our values and the impacts of our policies. Yeah, I, I think that the amendment, you know, it still moves us in the right direction. I want to go further, and the further I want to go is what's in the staff recommendation. And so, I'm, I'm going to support the staff recommendation on this one, not support the amendment. But I want to, I do want to make sure that, you know, to address those, those comments that I heard, that, you know, if we're not willing to touch parking requirements for affordable housing, I don't think we can say we're being genuine when we say we want affordable housing, especially in our downtown areas.
It doesn't make, it doesn't increase the parking supply. So, I think it's, I think it's, you know, wish-based, right? So, to the extent it's based on a, an intelligent rationale that there will be fewer cars, I think it makes a lot of sense, right? To the extent that it doesn't, I think we're just, it's, it's just wishful thinking-based.
Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, just real quick. I had asked during Q and A about what's a microunit. I think staff originally proposed no parking for 300-square-foot apartments, which was another way we could go. You know, there's a lot of affordable housing on ELMA. You know, they use less parking, but they still use parking. So, I think ultimately, I support the motion. I, to Councilmember Walbach's comments, I think this is a pretty big adjustment, you know, reducing by half and then reducing the guest parking. But again, I think we need to have some parking.
Councilmember Coop?
I'll be supporting the motion, the amendment. And, you know, we do have a parking issue. And when we all ran for the campaign on affordable housing, we're talking about affordable housing, not giving away parking as an incentive in order to build it when we have an issue. And we're not digging, we are in a hole. We're not going to dig any more deeper than we need to by just having no parking.
Councilmember Fine?
All right, so I got to jump in this one. I actually don't care, and I think it's, the amendment's going to pass. We're talking about three acres of RT 35 at most. You're going to get 120 units. I think if we were to get 120 units of BMR in the city with absolutely no parking, most everyone in this community would be supportive of that, even if we didn't add 60 parking spots or 120 parking spots. Tom, you brought up the issue of microunits. If somebody builds 300-square-foot units, some people might be interested in them. And then we're going to build parking spots which are just about as big. This is a really marginal issue, but I think Councilmember Walbach did bring up the issue like, you know, hey, parking is a cost to affordable housing. It's a cost to regular housing. This is the balancing act we're choosing.
Councilmember Holman? It's a tough act to follow.
Yeah, it's, I think, Tom, Councilmember DeBois said it most. It's like, it's not that affordable housing projects don't have any parking demand. And also recall that, you know, oftentimes, there's a manager that lives onsite that usually has a car, and there are people who come in service, you know, services that need someplace to park, and they need to get their cars offsite, let me see, off the street, especially in an RPP district. So, I think this is reasonable. And then, while I have the microphone, just real quickly, I'd ask the mayor if we could, I'd ask the mayor, just since I have the mic to be efficient, if we could take Section 5 separately so I can vote for everything else. I appreciate it.
You know, would you mind if we just recorded you as a no vote on that section? Or do you want to take it separately?
Whichever way, but just-
I'd prefer, but I'm willing to do that, but my preference would be just to record you as a no vote on Section 1.
Thank you for that. Whichever way, I just want to, I'm not going to be supporting Section 5, so.
All right. Okay, seeing nothing further, if we could vote on the motion and if Councilmember Holman-
Do you have the amendment?
Oh, yeah, on the amendment. We're going to vote on the amendment first. You're right. And that passes on a six to two with Councilmembers Walbach and Fine voting no. Now, if we could vote on the entire motion, and I will record Councilmember Holman, if that's all right, on Section 5, right, voting no? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka absent and Councilmember Holman voting no on Section 5. Which is Councilmember comments, questions, and announcements. Councilmember Holman?
I have a question, please. So, we have a second retreat that is scheduled, and at least some of us don't know the purpose of that retreat. And we've had a consultant reach out to us to want to have conversations, and I don't know how to prep for that conversation because I don't know what the retreat's for or about. So, can we be enlightened on that, please?
So, I think that's a good question. I think I'll have the acting city manager at Jakarta send out a email to all of council regarding the retreat so we can do it in a thoughtful and, and obviously, you know, get questions back from council members. All right? Seeing no other lights, and I want to make sure the meeting is adjourned.